Greetings from the new Simply Hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes. We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here, but now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure. Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Call this meeting to order, and I hope you can all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to announce?
Yes. So we are returning from an executive session, and the purpose of the executive session was to discuss a complaint against a public officer under Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A1. And we resolved an issue between the town manager and the select board chair.
And I'll just follow up and say I sent a bit of an ill-advised email to Mr. Suso, and he responded that he felt it was outside the limits of my scope and authority and perhaps violated the Charter. And the Board agreed with Mr. Suso, and I apologize for him, and we're going to move forward. So now, recognition. And glad Jeremiah Pearson's here today, because I was going to mention Jeremiah Pearson with the cleanup of the roadways and the trees. What a mess you had on your hands, so thank you very much. And to the NSTAR and utilities as well. I mean, we might think we suffered for a few days, but geez, what a mess they had. All the trees down and all the wires, so thank you very much, and thanks to the utilities people as well.
And all your staff, not just you, obviously.
And not just you personally.
Not you at all, I guess, is what they're saying, Jeremiah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure he was out there with the chainsaw. I've seen him in action.
Yeah, it was really... Oh, sorry, go, Angie.
And also to the police department, the fire department, and Department of Public Works for all the work that was put in. We were thankfully only without power for a day and a half, and I know it's because of all the hard work that everyone put in, so thank you.
And I know Mr. Suso spent a couple of days in the... maybe a few days in the emergency center there. Did indeed. Fire station. So there's a lot goes into it. I didn't realize the storm was going to be as intense as it was. I don't know if anybody did, but it was pretty impactful, so thank you, guys. And announcements, we have a couple of announcements. I know Barbara Schneider's here, and she wants to make one announcement.
Kevin Freel and I just want to take a few minutes of your time. We're kind of debuting a new project, another animal project for the town of Falmouth. But I will let Kevin introduce it, and then I'll just say a few words about how we go forward.
Well, first of all, every year I do a kind of a photography project, and this year I chose the osprey. And I wanted to photograph all of the nests we have in osprey and try and document every single bird. And what led to was, I discovered that we have a real problem with the osprey nesting on our utility poles in Falmouth. We located 21 nests on utility poles. And in the spring, there was a cleanup that came through, removed a bunch of nests. Every single nest got rebuilt with, you know, there were improper deterrents or whatever would have prevented them from nesting there again. And basically, long story short, about four months ago, started working with the Conservation Commission to seek alternative locations for these nests. And we've come up with a plan to raise, I think we were up to 19 different new nests to get them off of our utility poles. We've had, I believe there were nine osprey nest fires this year, which obviously draws from our fire department, other resources as well. Every time there's a fire, there's a power outage. So we're trying to get rid of that problem, and we're going to need a lot of help to do it. We have basically till St. Patrick's Day comes to get everything in place, have these new platforms ready. And then we're going to need some help from the electrical company to put up proper deterrents. And we feel like this could really work and be kind of a, I don't know, almost kind of a program that can be spread to other towns and figure out, because it's a real problem.
So you guys were all handed the informational packets, and I'll let Barbara explain kind of from there.
On the back of this card, which we will start to hand out at town meeting next week, and then it will be on different racks around town. We are part of Together We Can, Falmouth Together We Can, so we are an official 501(c)(3). They were nice enough to take us under their umbrella so that people can give money and know that it's being carefully monitored. We are trying to work with Boy Scout groups, we're trying to work with different volunteers, and we're certainly working closely with conservation, making sure that anything that has to be permitted will be. So our goal is to raise enough money and to get enough manpower, woman power, to have in place by St. Patrick's Day these alternative sites and hopefully deterrents on these poles. And so I'll leave it at that. It's very explanatory on the back of the steps we've taken. It's been a nice team effort, and wish us well. Thank you.
Certainly do.
Thank you guys very much.
I've been enjoying following you guys on Falmouth Wildlife and Facebook there.
Your photos are amazing, Kevin.
Appreciate it.
Really beautiful.
And unfortunately, I saw an osprey trying to land on a pole on Route 28, just up the street from McDonald's, and I watched him die. I went in for a landing, and he touched the wings, and he slowly fell to the ground. And I went over to see if I could do anything, but couldn't do anything for him, he was dead. Right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also, this week, on the 11th, we're going to be back to live, respectfully remembering the Veterans' Day at Library Lawn. So if anybody can make that, don't have to work. You should take the day off.
Can you just remind us of the time? Can you just remind the public of the time?
Is it 10 or 11?
It's 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
At the Library Lawn.
Very good. And did you have another?
So the Woods Hole Diversity Advisory Committee in honoring Native American Heritage Month has two activities. There is a virtual screening of, I'm not going to say this name correctly, so I'm just going to say there's a virtual screening of a movie produced by Native Americans about here, about being here. The screening is virtual from the 14th to the 17th, and the actual event is on Tuesday, November 16th at 7:30 p.m. And then there's a virtual book club discussion on Monday, November 22nd. Unfortunately, we will all be here, but I think they're going to have some information online afterwards. So for more information, go to woodswholddiversity.org and look for Native American Heritage Month.
Yes.
Mentioned that there are precinct meetings that are going on. They started last Thursday, and they're ongoing this week. Best thing to do is to check them out, find out when your precinct meets by going on the town's website.
The town clerk will have that posted.
Yep.
Public comment, we did receive a very long letter from Perry Alphs Hunter and asked to be read at the meeting, but, you know, I think that I need to work on that a little bit with her before we... And I don't know if it's appropriate to take one person's lengthy comments and announce them as if it's almost a position of a board.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if I may, that we never really read people's letters into public... We started that during COVID because obviously it was just easier. But in general, we really had people come for public comment. If people had some letters, sometimes at the end of the meeting, we would discuss some of those if they kind of touched on some of the subject matter. So, I mean, I think that it's appropriate, we're back... I know some people have concerns, but we are back to in-person meetings, so I don't know, maybe we should, not today, but maybe we should have a policy about it going forward?
I want to acknowledge receipt of it, and it has to do with diversity and equity and inclusion, and it's important, but it's just, I don't know if I could read it in two minutes either. And we're going to take it up, it's not going to go away, but I don't think at this time I'm going to read that whole thing. I'll work with this lady and see if we can come up with something that the Board can consider, maybe as a more clear policy rather than to just, you know, adopt everything that everyone sends us all the time. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, maybe on our next, one of our upcoming agendas, we can just kind of review what your, the Board's policy will be about public comment going forward.
Right.
Well, and then we could actually have an agenda item for that particular issue as well.
Yes.
And then it would be appropriate to read it into the record then.
Okay.
Perfect.
Public comment, does anyone have any public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Jack Affery, and I'm the race director for the May Five Wind Cape Cod Marathon Weekend. And as you all know, we had to cancel it this year, and I want to bring you up to date on what we've done. We're not planning on rescheduling it, just logistically, it just wouldn't work with the police and volunteers and all the runners that came in from out of town, so our next race will be next October. What we're thinking of doing seriously, though, is changing the date of our event. It's always been the last weekend in October, and we're looking at changing it to the first weekend in October. For a couple of reasons. One is, the weather just doesn't seem to cooperate with us the last weekend in October, since I've been director the last four years. That's one reason. And then, we had an issue this year too with the time period leading up, leading up to the race. With our pole banners on Main Street, and we want to get that resolved. They were, they were put up a little bit too low, partially because the American flags were still up there, and they couldn't be mounted higher, the height that they normally were. So we're going to work with DPW, and I've talked with a few people, and we want to have it so that the flags, they usually come down a week after Labor Day, and what we like to do is if we move our date to October 1st, after the flags come down, we would put up our banners at the normal height, so they wouldn't interfere with any pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk. Also, if we go to October 1st, the last couple of years, I know we've interfered with some of the Halloween setups on the light posts, so we prefer not to do that. So if we move to the first weekend in October, that won't be an issue either. So we're trying to, we're trying to make it so that we don't negatively impact anything that's going on in town. I've talked with the Chamber of Commerce, the Village Association, and working with the flag football, and recreation with the soccer on Saturdays, so that we can eliminate any potential issues that may come up. So I expect to get those all resolved, if there are any, and then when we submit our race application early next year, these updates will be in there.
All right. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Affirm appointment of Deputy Public Works Director.
We have the November 15th town meeting comment.
Oh, excuse me, that's under announcements, I went right by it. Okay. So that's November 15th, this town meeting, and what comments would we like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. A little later on in the meeting, Scott McGann will be joining us if there are any questions regarding matters related to the indoor venue. It'll be at Lawrence School, as the Board's aware, a week from tonight, starting at 7:00 p.m. sharp. And there were a few questions that have come up about the indoor venue, and we are asking town meeting members and all those who would be attending if they will, to wear their masks and to take them off when they speak at the microphone, which is the same protocol we followed when we were at the high school field house. And we will provide masks and sanitizing implements at check-in tables for any town meeting members that might need a mask or need to use hand sanitizer as well. Also, on the main floor of Lawrence School, there's approximately 650 chairs, folding chairs that are there, and we have generally no more than 200 town meeting members. So we're asking that those who would attend, whether they be department heads or the public, if they would use the second floor of the Lawrence School, so that town meeting members can spread out as far as they would care to in the main area. If they want to skip chairs, or if they're with a group that they're comfortable with as far as vaccination and masks, they can sit together, but that would be their choice. And Scott McGann can talk about that a little further, if the Board would like, when he... He's our first item on business about 8:15. We just wanted to get that word out in general.
May I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Will there be microphones up on that top floor for folks from the public or department heads if they have to speak?
Yes, yes, there will be.
And now we're getting back to the affirming the appointment of Deputy Public Works Director. I see McConaty's here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a couple introductory remarks. We have with us tonight Steve Cattarett. Steve is our appointee, my appointee, for the position of Deputy Public Works Director. He comes to us with very strong credentials and background. He's a professional engineer, and we're very pleased to affirm the recommendation of Public Works Director Peter McConaty and my appointing Stephen to this position. He's with us and can make a few comments, as is customary, and I would ask the Board for your consideration of affirming Mr. Cattarett's appointment, and also to, if you would waive the residency requirement, as at the present time he lives off Cape.
Welcome. You want to come up and introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Steve Cattarett. It's very nice to meet all of you. This has been, I view this as a tremendous opportunity. My background is, I do civil and environmental engineering. I've been in private consulting for over 30 years. The last 30 years, I've only been in two positions. My current position for just about 15 years. It was a nice process to be PETA. I met Mr. Suso during one of the interviews, certainly learned a lot about this position, and I'm really looking forward to working in the town of Falmouth.
Great. Is this your first municipal experience?
Yeah, so my background is, the private consulting I've done has been primarily for public sector work, so it's kind of come at it from the opposite side. Rather than being on the municipal side, I was on the other side, but providing services to a lot of work, the state of Rhode Island, state of Massachusetts, and then the other municipalities. So I have, and then I also do have some municipal experience in Somerset on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I've been out for 15 years, I've been the chairman for the last eight, and then just past April, I got elected to the Somerset Water and Sewer Commission. So I started on that board in April.
All right. Sounds good. Any questions from the Board?
You need a motion to waive?
I would ask for a vote to affirm, if you would, please.
So move?
Second.
And waive the residency requirement?
Please.
Is that part of the...
I'll make it as part of my motion. Motion to affirm and to waive the residency requirement.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I'd like to thank you very much. Thank you. Good for us.
Next, we have licenses. Summary of actions, approve application for change of manager of an all-alcoholic club license, Falmouth Elks Lodge, Lodge Number 2380, BPOE of USA Incorporated, located at 140 Palmer Avenue in Falmouth. Anyone here from the Elks tonight? Welcome, Mark. Would you come on up to the microphone so we can give you the inquisition?
A list of questions?
Hi there. I'm here on behalf of the Elks, Falmouth Elks. The past licensee has retired, and they're looking for somebody new to go on the record, so I volunteered as an elk, that's what we do.
That's right. And as an elk, we also recuse ourselves sometimes when we have conflicts and, I know Mr. Mark, and I can speak for him, but I probably should not vote on this one. I'll leave it to you folks.
Excellent. I'll ask you the same question that we ask everyone, which is, just, you're aware that in this position, you have the responsibility, even if you're not there for a shift, if something is, you know, goes wrong, ultimately the responsibility lies with you in this position.
Correct.
Great. I would move that we, unless there are any other questions, I would move approval of this application for change of manager.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four and one abstained.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mark?
Thank you.
Next, we have approved application for a special one-day all-alcoholic liquor license, Falmouth Theatre Guild, Highfield Theater, 58 Highfield Drive, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, December 4th, 5th, and 6th, 2021, and December 10th, 11th, and 12th, 2021.
I would move approval. I know we have, oh, someone here.
Second.
There is one thing on that one. December 4th, 5th, and 6th is actually Saturday, Sunday, Monday, so it should be 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
Oh, good.
Okay.
And 10th, 11th, and 12th. Otherwise, does anybody have questions for me?
No, you guys always show up and we never...
You're regulars.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you keeping track, though, of how many? You guys always keep track of how many one-days you get.
Yes. Yeah, I believe we have to sacrifice a couple by the end of the season, but that's fine.
So I would approve, I would move to approve as amended, December 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
And second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is approve an application for a one-day Sunday entertainment license at Shipwreck 263 Grand Ave, Sunday, November 14th, 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I will note, we did receive at least one concern from a resident who was in opposition. So welcome, come on up.
Falmouth Heights.
Yep.
And...
This is the same, this is not the same one I think got in the email.
That's a letter, written copy of the email.
Oh, it is.
I don't know, is it? Can I see it? I didn't go to my mailbox, excuse me. Excuse me?
I don't think I have it either.
No, I don't have it.
Correct. Regarding a noise complaint, here, Robert Long. Oh, this is from Mr. Suso. This came up a while ago.
That was the last meeting, correct.
What we sent, yes.
Well, I apologize, since I wasn't at the last meeting, I just pulled that out of my box.
Okay.
That's right. You were here on the phone.
I was on the phone, yeah.
But we did get a new email from a concerned neighbor. I didn't...
Yes, Falmouth Heights.
Marivest Association, was it, or?
No, I don't think she was. I think she was speaking on her behalf. She's a resident speaking on her, yes.
Well, go ahead and introduce us, I mean, introduce yourself and tell us how you're going to manage this.
Okay, so I'm Rob Lowen. I'm the property manager, general manager over there, have been even when it was BBC, and still now today for Shipwrecked. Same situation. This is actually in late, because we were originally going for the permit for the field, and we were going under the entertainment license with the Falmouth Road Race Committee for Falmouth in the fall. But then when we weren't able to do the beer, the beer tent on the field, we got the one-day permit to do it in the backpacking lot, and I called to make sure that we did or did not need a new lick, a new entertainment license for, in the packing lot for Sunday. Spoke with Phyllis, and she said, yes, you do need one, so that's why I reapplied for the entertainment license for Sunday. So it's just that, it's just there, it's the same, it's running the same way as it was for basically Falmouth Road Race on a much lesser scale, just in the backpacking lot. So we're just looking for the entertainment license for the afternoon, pretty much basically from 11 to 3-ish. I think I put 11 to 6 for breakdown and shutdown, you know, start. But that's, it's basically running the same way. I'm going to serve alcohol, you know, I'm going to serve beer and wine on the backpacking lot, kind of like we've always run our events, security, so on and so forth.
Music and stuff, is it going to be live performances or just...
Uh, no, this is just a DJ for the morning afternoon.
Well, that inherently is amplified then, right?
Yes, which is what we always do for, whether it's Falmouth Road Race or if we do other functions or events in the backpacking lot. We typically always have amplified.
All right. I don't remember exactly, Mr. Suso, do you recall? Did we authorize the amplified, or was it acoustic?
I think the actual entertainment license was for acoustic. Special events, occasionally they can request amplified if the Board so chooses. But the basic package is intended to be acoustic and not amplified.
Right, because that was the impetus for that letter that Scott Price had, was that some of the neighbors had said that they thought the understanding was that the music was to be acoustic, but then they had noted that they thought it was amplified.
And that's, I mean, that's, that's on me, because what we did was when we had, we had, you know, a one-man band or a duo, they would come on and they would actually plug in with a microphone. And I, you know, but there was all acoustic guitar, so on and so forth. There wasn't, we weren't, it wasn't like an electric guitar or drums or any of that, but the musicians don't, they typically told us they wouldn't play unless they could actually use a microphone. So, again, that was on my behalf.
I see misunderstanding of the intent.
Correct. It wasn't, and again, it was always, you know, we do, we did constant sound checks. We would walk the beach, the managers were on duty where they'd have to walk the beach, they walked the street, they walked the backpacking lot, so on and so forth, to make sure that that music was always at a level, at a respectable level for all the neighbors.
Okay. Because technically, although it's impossible to achieve, technically it's not supposed to go beyond the property lines? So I know that's, as I said, it's not really achievable, but it's the intent, so if you can try to be a little more careful with this one and...
Absolutely. And again, this one is a special permit for the back, so that's, that's why we put in the application for...
And so just, I want to be clear, that this one is for, obviously, a DJ with amplification?
Correct.
For this particular special event?
Correct, yes.
Did you want to speak, Mr. Fineran?
Mark Fineran, I was here the last meeting, and I almost got up and spoke. When you limited them to just acoustical or no amplification, they're on 263, 265 Grand Ave. I live on 98 Grand Ave. My neighbor across the street goes out on his front porch with his guitar, and he plays with an amplifier. I mean, and I would be free to go across the street with my guitar and amplifier and join Bob and play. and join Bob and play. And I don't see why they should be restricted more than I would be or anyone else in Falmouth Heights for that matter, especially if you've been there for any length of time because, you know, the noise was incredible. I could, you know, when I was a kid, I was here, I could hear them belly flopping at the brothers' floor, you know, my address and everything else that went on. And I drove by, I drive by there all the time. And it seems like the wind blows more on the weekend, but you can't hear anything. And I went by when there were guys with guitars, they were just, I think it was the first Saturday, they were just setting up, and, and I couldn't hear a thing. And then I went by later on and they had microphones and a speaker and they were singing and I still couldn't hear a thing. Like I said, I, I don't, I think restricting them any more than you restrict anyone else in Falmouth Heights is, is wrong. And I mean, the nature of that complaint was because they violated the no amplification thing, not that they were, the noise was excessive, because it's not. I mean, I lived there.
Well, the one from a couple of weeks ago was because it was loud on the beach and people were actually moving down the beach, according to the letter.
I, I find that extremely hard to believe because I'm there all the time. And I mean, it's, it's not at an offensive level and I mean, heretofore, like I said, my neighbor's out on his guitar, on the front porch with his guitar and his amp all the time and nobody complains. Why should they be restricted anymore?
We don't have to license him.
Well.
Maybe we should.
I'm thinking about busting out my guitar because it just doesn't seem fair.
All right. Next Monday, you can bring it down.
I, I would move, oh, I'm sorry.
So I, I'll read the letter into the record, a letter of opposition. I'm writing to voice my opposition to the one-day entertainment event proposed by the Shipwrecked Restaurant. This type of event is not going to benefit runners or spectators, but rather a crowd coming into the neighborhood to party. I think the residents of Falmouth Heights host many events throughout the year. These events can bring unruly crowds, noise, and trash that is left behind. Also, the Heights community does have a lot of summer residents who leave in the fall, but there are many of us who live here full-time and choose not to have the crowds and events that every new restaurant brings throughout the year. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
But it's not a association, it's a person, just a neighbor. So just asking to try to keep it down. I'm not, I mean, otherwise. Any other advice or comments from the board?
At what time is the actual race? Do you know what time it is?
I believe the race starts at, I think it's eleven, first row off. Typically, it would be first round of processes at eleven forty.
Okay.
Twelve, three-ish. We're assuming because the game's on at one o'clock, then most games, so it wouldn't, anyways, but I put eleven, I think it'd be ten to six or eleven to six.
Eleven to six, yep.
I did that just for setup and breakdown purposes. It's not going to be as elaborate as the actual road race after potty, but it'll be on a certain level. They're doing a festival, field, race day, festival. It's the game, do what they want to do. You know, I'm a runner and, you know, like to have a beer after my race, so it's a, you know, a lot of people do enjoy doing that. So that's, that's kind of what we're doing is kind of being another option for people who stay on the Heights.
Sounds fun.
Appreciate it.
I know that, that's.
Do we have a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Now administrative orders, vote to accept FY twenty-twenty-one wellness grant in the amount of six hundred dollars from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group to the Personnel Department grant account. I move we approve it and send gratitude. Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Cape Cod Health Group.
Five. He's a donor.
Cape Cod Five is a donor, okay, very good. Thanks, Cape Cod Five. Vote to accept FY twenty-twenty-one Bold Approve Vest Partnership Program Award in the amount of eight thousand thirty-four dollars and twenty cents.
I would move approval.
Second.
Thanks to the chief for using this grant opportunity. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to authorize, authorize request to CPC for allocation of one million dollars in funding to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, you have a letter from Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson Staub in the packet that recommends to the board your consideration of requesting a million dollars. You make a request generally this board, every year, for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund from the CPC and we're recommending you consider a million dollars. As you know, you have a town meeting warrant article that the board has advanced for four million dollars from free cash. This would supplement that and make additional funds available for that important purpose.
Sounds good. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Looks like we have a question in the audience.
Oh, certainly. Come on up, sir.
I'm Robert Mahan from the Affordable Housing Committee and I'm one of the newest members on, I just started June. But it's my understanding, in the past, it was one point three. That was transferred from the CPC to the Falmouth Affordable Fund. The request was for one point three and I guess on the docket here it's for a million. And we're just wondering, you know, why the difference? Because that three hundred thousand dollars could possibly fund three to six units this coming year in real terms. So we're wondering why the difference.
All right. And Mr. Suso, do you have any idea why?
Well, we just recommended a round number since the board's already going with four million dollars. We thought we'd supplement it with an additional million. But this board can request any figure you would prefer. It hasn't been the same every year, I will underscore that. It's varied from year to year.
You know, I'm the liaison to that committee and really have been part of that for seven years. And they go through their process of figuring out how to allocate their funds on an annual basis. And so they have, in the past, independently coming up, come up with a number, which I think just got filtered through to us. So if there's not a specific basis here, I think they could come up with an alternative amount that they could recommend at town meeting.
CPC, you're saying?
CPC, that's correct.
Certainly.
So this number did not come from the CPC then? The million or?
Uh, I don't think it came directly from the CPC, no.
I believe our request was one point three.
You're referring to the Affordable Housing Committee, not the CPC. I just want to be clear, we're not confusing the board here.
Yes. The Preservation Committee is this separate body.
I understand, yeah.
That's the various applications, but also takes a look at the revenues that they are expecting for the year and sort of allocates them to the particular application.
So this is the amount that the CPC recommended, just a million?
Is that the case?
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
I don't know that for certain, but you know, it'd certainly be comfortable if, if the board would like to recommend this at a, at a minimum amount and if the CPC could exceed that, hallelujah.
I like that wording.
It says here, the CPC has indicated it would welcome recommendation from the select board as to the amount to be allocated each year. The current uncommitted balance in the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund is four hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and ninety. In general, it's our recommendation that the town allocate more funds to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund than is required to subsidize known projects in light of the acute need for housing and the fact that having uncommitted funds available stimulates developer interest in pursuing projects that might not be considered without town support.
Is this time-sensitive, Mr. Suso, in order for it to go into town meeting?
Uh, no, it won't go to town meeting until next spring.
Okay.
So this is just a deadline for CPC. And could I just interject, Madam Vice Chair, if I may? By statute, there's a certain percentage that CPC needs, needs to set aside for affordable housing and this is, that is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So you are recommending an amount three times the minimum under the statute. I just wanted to make that clear. But certainly CPC has been very generous in this regard in the past and we certainly welcome it, as long as the board's comfortable with whatever amount is voted.
I would like, just like to change the wording slightly and just simply say that the select board is trusted as the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, vote to request a minimum of one million dollars from the Community Preservation Committee to be allocated to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. I so move.
And that's just a minimum?
Right.
Right. I would, I think that's in order.
I would actually like clarification from the CPC on that number.
So as a former CPC member, I just am, so it's up to the CPC to bring a recommendation to town meeting. And I believe that all this is doing is asking you to make a formal request on behalf of the Affordable Housing Fund to the CPC for an amount. It would be up to the CPC, as they always do, to deliberate long and hard about the amount of money they must and can and feel priority to give to that fund. And I think the change of the word minimal, minimum is a good one, but I would always remember that it's, the CPC certainly debates this and tries to give as much as they can when they weigh all the needs for the town.
Thank you.
I'm not comfortable changing the number.
No, but I, I like Sam's amendment saying that that's the minimum. It gives them latitude to feel that he can check their budget and see if they can do more. So with that, is that a motion then?
It is.
All right.
I would second that motion.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Want to pause.
Next is approve a crest, a request from Water Quality Management Committee for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars in AFC funding for a baseline study of the ecology of Little Pond by UMass Dartmouth. And the AFC is Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence. That was from the, some of the pollution that had been emanating from the military reservation and it was designated to be used in the East Falmouth area. And I asked the Water Quality Committee about that and they feel like because this is spreading an area that serves East Falmouth, even though it's heat ticket, so it's semantics. And so I want to clarify that, but I'm not opposed to it.
I just have one question. I think I saw Eric.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, is here.
Question? My question is, is just, to what extent have you been working with perhaps Ken Foreman at MBL about Little Pond?
Early and often.
Oh, okay. All right.
Ken has had his students out there for the last several years monitoring the groundwater that goes in Little Pond and, and he will continue to do that this year, along with the USGS. But basically, our thinking on this is now that the town has spent forty million dollars on removing nitrogen from Little Pond and according to the formula that they use at the Mass Hestertz Project, we're reducing eighty-eight percent of all the nitrogen that needs to be reduced to get to our TMDL. So we thought what we really need here is a before and after. Right now is the before time because the nitrogen reduction hasn't reached the pond, but it's going to very soon, we hope. But the last baseline that was done for Little Pond was in two thousand and five as part of the original MEP project. So we really need a baseline now so that in years to come, we can see if the pond does improve and, and we, and we can measure how much it improves using this baseline. The same people who did the MEP will be doing this, the SMass group, and they're, they need to do it sort of now because November was when they did the original MEP study and you want to keep these things as, as similar as possible. So that's, that's the purpose and we appreciate your support on it.
Any other questions?
I move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will recuse myself from the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Four and one. And next, we have authorized signing of, by DEI Officer of Bridge to Blue Letter of Support with Whittle Oceanographic Institution for Grant Application under the Build Back Better Program. So is there anyone to speak to that or would you like to?
Yeah, certainly. The board has a copy of the letter, which had gone out some time ago and we had gotten a, a request from our Jackie Hartman to sign on. I guess she was asked by a representative of HOE to do so. And of course, that letter had to go out back in October, so it was not timely in order to extend that, but I bring it to the board for you to consider that should there be a request for subsequent endorsement by Jackie as our DEI Officer of that HOE initiative. This board has already supported that process, as you know, and they've transmitted a letter recording me.
Right. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for taking action on that. Retroactive approval of Water Department's application for FY twenty-two MIA, MI, I, Risk Management Program grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars for safety equipment.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again for looking for those grants.
Indeed.
Next is approve request for permission to submit an application to the Conservation Commission to reconstruct an existing dock at one thirty-nine Edgewater Drive West. And I know this is just a preliminary request to even take it to CONCOM because we have to have the initial approval. So is there a motion to give them permission to go to CONCOM or is there any questions or concerns about the?
This will come back to you.
Right.
I move to approve the request for permission to submit an application to the Conservation Commission to reconstruct an existing dock at one thirty-nine Edgewater Drive West.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Next, seven thirty, public hearings.
I can read it for you if you want me to read the notice.
Certainly, that'd be, very good, thank you.
Okay. Liquor license hearing. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws as amended. That pickle jar, LTD, DBA Pickle Kitchen has applied for an alteration of premises to its all-alcohol common victual license located at one seventy Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Tower Hall on Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty-one, seven thirty on the above application. And this was published in the October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you, welcome. Is this the crew here? Come on up. You can introduce yourselves, please.
Well, I'm Ben Gallant and.
Good evening, I'm Cassandra Gallant.
Elizabeth Lee.
Hi. Do you want to just tell us what it is you're doing over there and why you're here?
Yeah, we just put in to make the back patio a permanent part of our.
Okay. I saw the, saw the sketch. Could you just walk us through it a little bit because I wasn't really completely clear. Is this the interior at the top?
Can I come up?
Is that right? That's the interior at the top then?
Oh, that's, that's.
Yeah, this is the inside of the building. Okay, so you just drew it just the patio itself.
Yeah.
I see. Okay. Everybody understand that then?
Okay.
So the building itself is not shown, they're just showing you the patio.
Yep. Thank you, that's.
Sure. And Mr. Suso, can you comment on this for us? Have you worked with the applicant to get to this point?
I have not, no. I have not been involved with the applicant on this.
All right, thank you.
Can I just ask a process question?
Yeah.
Which maybe is where you're going, Doug, which is, as it stands now, do we have the authority for this? Are there any other zoning issues that are implicated with the changing of the number of seats as related to parking? Just because I know that they're in a part of town where they don't have, you don't have parking spots that are assigned to your building. So I just want to...
Well, if I could, you're not changing the number of seats, you're moving some outside, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, so that wouldn't really come into play.
Yeah.
We had that question come up with another property where they were...
Right.
Using the parking lot, so this one's different.
So you guys are just going to use that back patio area that you've been using during COVID in the season when you can use it to...
Correct.
To space out more.
To just socially distance, is that what your goal is? Keep people separate?
It is, and I mean, it really, I thought it was a great asset for anybody that wanted to continue outdoor dining, and in the summer months, I don't know if anybody's been in there, but what we do is, we're so busy that we like close down the bar, we take tables and actually close down our...
Front part.
Our front part, when we use outside. So today, like, we didn't use any counter service or a few tables, because everybody wanted to sit outside. We can never go above the number, we're 59 inside, we will never be able to go above that number, the kitchen can't handle it.
Right.
So we're not adding any more space, we're just kind of reconfiguring when the weather permits us to do so.
Thank you.
No, thanks for clarifying, because we've had other, like Doug says, we've had sort of other applicants who are looking to do something different, which does implicate some zoning. We're not adding any seats at all.
Is there alcohol service on the patio?
There is, yes.
And is it fenced in?
It is, yes.
Okay. It's like a permanent fence, or just a robe?
Well, no, because at the time, it said no permanent fencing, where it said historic. So we use that kind of burlap, it's kind of like a...
Tennis court.
Like a sun shade.
Tennis court, screen.
Okay, right.
So it is blocked off, because you also know what the back of that patio looks like.
Yeah.
All the dumpsters are back there, so we did want to block it to make it visually a little bit nicer. So it is blocked in, and it does have like a little gate, so yes, it is closed in.
Well, I'm glad to hear you coming forward with this, so any questions from the board? Any concerns, or any questions from the public? Any concerns? Any?
Barb Schneider, Precinct 4. I just want to say, a lot of our friends still don't want to eat inside, and I don't know that they're going to change for a long time, and I am so excited that this town continues to find ways to have places for us all to go outside and enjoy a meal, and that's one of the best places in town. So I hope that you will approve something like this and continue to support businesses that are finding ways to provide that, because it's really a new way of thinking.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, in my opinion, it's one of the few good things that came out of COVID, is this new awareness of what we've been missing.
Agreed. I would move that we close the hearing, then.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me.
Is there a motion to approve?
I would move to approve.
Second.
As a second, as a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
You too.
Public hearing next is a shade tree hearing on application by the Parks, Falmouth Parks Department for removal of two Norway maple trees at 187 Central Ave, East Falmouth. Haven't cut enough trees yet, huh?
Yeah, I guess not.
I will just read, if I can, I'll just read the public notice.
Yes, please.
In accordance to Mass General Laws, Chapter 87, a public hearing will be held by the Falmouth Select Board on Monday, November 8, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall 59, Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass, to consider the removal of the following public trees. 187 Central Avenue, removal of two Norway maples. Reason, entrance for new development. The trees identified above have been posted for public inspection. Any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden prior to or during the hearing. And then it gives a mailing address for the tree warden, and this was published October 29, 2021. And if I recall, we moved it, we had some problem with the way it was noticed, and so we had to renotice and bring it back before the board.
Correct.
Yeah, so, these are two Norway maples, they're in poor health, like Megan said, they're proposed development. If these were to be allowed to be removed, I would make sure that two new trees would be replanted in their place, and actually more suitable trees, so it would be better, actually.
Is that the subdivision applicant would do that?
Yes, not us. And then I would make sure that all the, you know, requirements for pre and post installation were met, and the species.
What about the removal, do they do that themselves as well?
Yes.
Yes, question. Did you receive, I just, I'm wondering, did you receive any written objections, or...
I have not received any written objections.
And I don't think we did as a board, I just want to note that for the hearing.
I don't think so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Comments from the public, excuse me.
Motion to close the hearing?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, is there a motion to approve the removal?
Go for it.
Oh, I thought you'd, I was, second, I'm happy to do it, yes. I move to approve the removal of two Norway maple trees at 187 Central Ave, East...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to hold a public hearing on promulgation of mooring regulations under Chapter 231-15.1A.
Do you want me to read the notice?
Certainly, go ahead.
Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 231-15.1A, Promulgation of Mooring Regulations, on Monday, October 25, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room. The purpose of the hearing is to amend or otherwise modify the mooring regulations related to house floats and houseboats. Interested parties may review the draft regulations at the Harbor Master's office or online at HTTPS, www.falmouthmass.gov/233harbormaster, published October 1 and the 8, 2021.
Welcome, Mr. Fraser, how are you?
Good, thank you for having me back again. I hope you have a copy of the proposed regulations with the one change that we have discussed between the Town Council's office and Julian's office. We are suggesting that the requirement of a building permit be eliminated from the proposal. All other sections would remain as already presented to you. I did want to let you know that I did get a call from the state today, the Pump Out Grant Coordinator for the state, who wanted to reiterate that our use of the pump out boat for the house floats is under the town purview, and they will support that continuation, given the fact that it's the only pump out service for the house floats in Great Harbor.
And that's my biggest concern about this, is the use of the pump out boat and the comments that we've been receiving from some of the neighbors, saying that they feel sure that they're seeing signs of sewage being discharged. You know, there's a lot of things it could be, but I...
And, you know, it could be, but, you know, we get the same kind of complaints about regular vessels not using the pump out boat, or not veiling themselves to pump out stations. It's an enforcement issue. If it is brought to our attention, and we're able to obviously prove that somebody's not pumping out, then we'll take action against those people. As one of the regulations, also, they're going to be required, if our pump out boat isn't doing the service, they're going to have to give us a report annually of who is doing the pump out and where the untreated material is going.
Okay. And that, this will be a new addition, this new regulation with the record keeping of the pump out?
It will be, and obviously, we keep records for the pump out grant for anything the pump out boat does, but we will be requiring to save these for future reference, and if we, again, if somebody doesn't provide us with that information, then we can hold or not renew the permit.
Do you suspect, do you suspect that there may be any boats that are discharging without a holding tank?
Do I think that that's happening with 3,000 moorings? Yes, I do think that's happening, but I think it'd be unrealistic to think everybody is pumping out these days. I mean, we try to make the service available, and it's obviously free to anybody that wants it, but, you know, are there violations? I'm sure there are.
And do we have enough people to be able to keep that pump out running and servicing everybody if they need it?
The pump out boat is seasonal, obviously. We have proposed in the next budget go around to actually include the month of, through Columbus Day, at least on weekends, so that we'll, assuming we're able to hire somebody to do that and get somebody to come back on the weekends. This year, we would have had somebody that was available, but we didn't have the funding in place to keep him on until Columbus Day, so we have proposed that to Julian, it's under consideration.
Okay. And, anybody else want to take a question before I keep rambling on? The next one, I was going to say, if, so if it ends on October 30, we did have a lot of comments, and some, you know, a lot opposed, and a lot of people want to see moratorium, and some people feel like there should be no regulations, of course, it's a wide spectrum of comments, but one houseboat owner commented that they don't feel like there should be a time of year restriction, because they might like to use their houseboat year round, but if there's no pump out boat, how do we determine whether or not they have capacity to manage the waste?
Well, they would be able to technically use their boat year round, it would just have to be in the pond. The reason we want them out of Great Harbor over the winter is because of the exposure. So if they wanted to use the houseboat, I mean, somebody wanted to do that in the middle of the winter, and it's wintering inside the pond, that's acceptable, but they're still going to have to make provisions for pump out services.
Okay. I felt like there was a pretty strong argument from several residents that these structures should have insurance, and I know that's a burden on the owners. What's your feeling about that?
Should or should not?
Should.
Well, we propose that, I'm an advocate of everybody that has a boat should have insurance on it in this day and age, you know, particularly environmental insurance, it doesn't take much of a fuel spill to cause a problem. A lot of these don't have gas onboard, but they do have propane, and there is a potential for the, you know, if the houseboat went ashore and broke apart, that the holding tank could break apart, and somebody has to clean that up, so the insurance would be valuable.
I was also thinking in terms of damage to other vessels and so forth, and...
I know the town of Mashpee, for an example, has now begun requiring insurance policies for all the mooring holders.
Then there's also the argument that all rules that apply to boats should apply to houseboats, and there's so many different arguments. I wonder, does the board feel like this is comprehensive and complete enough at this point, or is there more discussion to be had?
Well, I would just conclude, if I could, by saying that, generally speaking, I believe that the houseboat fleet have done a very good job of self-regulating themselves. We don't get complaints about them, except for this year, really, it really hasn't been a giant issue. So as I said at the last meeting, this, these proposed regulations are really mirroring the policy that's already in effect. There were some minor tweaks to them, but generally speaking, it's pretty much the policy we're operating under now. Someone walks in through the door tomorrow and wanted to put one of these things in an area outside that 600-foot zone, we wouldn't allow it. So, overall, I think the current people that have houseboats will really see real no impact of this at all.
Okay, yes, Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, on the insurance, a notice that there's a clause here that says, "New house floats shall have general liability insurance, including environmental protection of at least $100,000, and proof of insurance shall be provided to the Harbor Master Department upon request." It does say "new" applicants, so we can't make this retroactive?
Well, we have had people that have suggested that all houseboats have the $100,000, but the reason we didn't include that, I think, was because we don't currently require boats to do that.
And that's where the issue of fairness comes in.
Well, the liability issue, too.
True.
In case of storm, they break loose, or there is some environmental damage that's done.
And, you know, I can't tell you how many down there have insurance, but I would guess, given the value of some of the ones that are down there, they're insured.
Right.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So, when you say new housefloat, so say someone who's had, has one already, and they do some repairs or augmentations to it, is that going to trigger this number 12? Or is it going to be someone who comes in for a new permit, or not permit, but, you know, who's going, who has, say, a mooring that they've had a boat on, and now they're going to put a...
Houseboat, yes, yes, that, that would trigger it.
Would it also trigger it, I've had this question asked, would also trigger it, say somebody's housefloat, I don't know, they get rid of it, it breaks off in a storm, and they have a new one built to put on that, is that going to trigger that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any new structure, but not...
Existing, yes.
And we've had a lot of comments also that there should be a prohibition on additional houseboats. Should there be a process, a public process for approval of future houseboats, or what do you think about that? Did we pick our noses in there with...
You know, I know there has been a lot of talk about the increase in the amount of houseboats down there, but overall, for the last five, 10 years, there has not been a significant increase in them. There have been some larger ones that are to replace smaller ones, so the overall number has gone up a little bit, but not drastically. And as I said, the 600-foot zone, it's already limiting, because if somebody wants one that's outside of that, they have to wait for a mooring inside of that zone to become available and relocate inside, so it could be, that could be a very long time they have to wait for that.
Yes.
I just want to comment that I know of people who live on houseboats, and they live on them during the summer, because they can't afford to live anywhere in Falmouth. So, my personal opinion is not limiting them, because it's an option for people who can't actually live in Falmouth, but want to be here year round. So, I understand that there's concern there might be too many, and the navigational aspect, I think, is a legitimate concern that people have, but I feel like if it's working now, if it becomes a problem, then we should address it, but I don't want to limit people on their options when we know we don't have a lot of options.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about, just the way when, when the knob got put into that brochure online, it was flooded with people to the point where, when the word is out, now we're talking about it, we've talked about it two weeks ago, talking about it tonight. I'm sure somebody's thinking, hey, I want a houseboat, too. I just feel like this conversation itself could spur new interest in additional houseboats, if we're kind of encouraging it.
Mr. Chair, yes. But they would already have to have a mooring.
Right.
Or they would get on the list, and maybe their grandchildren, or somebody, five generations from now, when, with climate change, that'll be the least of our issues, but, so I think it won't, it can't be like a run on the, on the candy store, because they have to still have that mooring. So I guess the only way that that would happen is if suddenly all the folks who are sort of sailors or boaters really want to make that transition, and I'm not worried it's going to be a huge influx. And I agree with Angie, if we see something like that happening for some reason, we certainly can address it.
I could be, excuse me, happy to report back to you on a regular basis, if I do get a large increase of requests down there, I can relay that to you, so you can keep up on it.
I did just see one typo, but maybe it's not a typo, because I'm not a boater, but on number four, is it, is that the right word? Is that how you spell flotation?
Spell check didn't change it for me, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Not sure. I can check that, though.
It looks strange to me, but...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll entertain comments from the public.
Learned something tonight.
I loved you, Al.
Did you?
I did.
Is there, pardon me?
I think, I don't think I heard your...
Yeah, so is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Yes, come on up to the podium, please.
My name's Tyler Baron. I just want to put a voice, or a name, to Angie's words. I would be someone looking for a place to live, and was considering building a houseboat this past summer. I have access to a mooring, Lord only knows how that happened, I'm on the waitlist as well, and will be maybe getting one in 30 years if all the people, you know, like, it's, it's almost an inevitability that, like, I won't receive a house or a mooring, right? So, I think to limit any of the potential for someone like myself with that in mind and concern for all the people who might be building more houseboats, I think the concern to limit them on account of the candy store being open or run on the candy store, as you said, I think is sort of baseless, really, I think it doesn't really stand up.
Would you say you're not a good example of that? How did you get the idea, did you, have you been thinking about it for a while?
Having grown up in Falmouth, having spent time on houseboats, having myself contemplated two summers living on a houseboat, for someone who wasn't occupying it.
What I'm saying is, you didn't just think this up in the last two weeks, because you heard about it here.
No, 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 this is something I've thought about first, right, right, but I think that, like, I think the point that Megan brought up is really true, that there couldn't be a sudden influx of people wanting to build them, because the people who already have boats out there, or someone like myself, have to make that transition, and people who have boats out there have had those boats for 20 years themselves, and are boaters, not houseboat people. So I think that concern just doesn't really stand, I guess, as I see it, and also, on the basis of having more options for people to have housing, I think it's, it doesn't necessarily make sense to limit those options for people.
All right, well, thanks for your comment. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Richard Pierce, I'm a resident of Woods Hole, and I'm firmly opposed to the houseboat amendment as it's posed. I want to thank Greg for his efforts to put forward some regulation. This is a long overdue conversation, in my opinion. Forty years ago, the town of Falmouth put in a bylaw that prohibited houseboats in town-owned marinas. The intent was to not have houseboats in town-owned marinas for some obvious reason that I think still holds true today. I don't believe that these mooring fields in the various town waters, the rest of the mooring fields are not open to houseboats, just Great Harbor, which I find to be arbitrary and capricious. You know, why just Woods Hole? Why not everyone? Everyone, as you said, wouldn't everyone like to have a houseboat? You know, why, why are we talking about this? Because the, the original intention of mooring fields, in my opinion again, was for the express use of boats for transportation and navigation. Powerboats, sailboats, fishing boats. This is a public resource. It's scarce with the 20-year waitlist. It was not designed for habitation, for, for housing development, which is what we have today with anywhere between 14 and 18. I count 14, but apparently there are 18 houseboats out there? I don't know. I have the master list I gave to the board select today, that Greg's office provided to me. In that list, if the dates are accurate, it shows the nature of the progression of the proliferation of the houseboats over the last 40 years. The suggestion that there hasn't been an increase recently, in the last 10 years, I beg to differ because of the fact that the, the numbers would suggest that there's been a one-third increase in the number of houseboats. There have been six additions, according to his numbers. Now, I'm not sure of the accuracy of them, but it sounds about right, because we've been sort of watching them slowly build. And it was Jonathan Goldman, who I have to thank as well, for being the catalyst for this conversation, by his introduction of the most recent houseboat that he wished to place outside of the proposed zone. So, this is a big issue for the neighbors of budding Great Harbor. We enjoy the waterfront, we enjoy the recreational use of the waters. We find in the summertime, on busy weekends, that these houseboats act as motherships, where smaller boats or tending craft are rafted up to it. I have pictures from an August 10 rave party that show a few boats apart with, gosh, anywhere around 50 people probably on this houseboat, and a band playing, which I don't have any begrudge the youth of Woods Hole and Falmouth for having a good time. But at the same time, I'm concerned about pollution, right? I'm concerned about, you know, how these, this harbor's being treated during such events. It's not like, there's plenty of bathrooms, there's plenty of drinking going on, I assume, you know? Having been young once, I partook. I don't anymore, sadly. But, I'm, I'm really concerned that if we have any more of these, the issues will compound. And, and I just don't see this being an appropriate use of a recreational boating field. An inappropriate use. There are lots of issues with regard to the hazards to navigation that these houseboats pose, will pose in the future. The height limit that's been proposed of 22 feet is astounding. That's a very high limit. And the blockage of views and the being able to see around these things, it's staggering to think that if we wake up in 20 years and we allow this to go forward as proposed, we will have a vastly different landscape in Woods Hole, akin to either a shanty town or an elaborate housing development. And I, I, I have empathy for people who are looking for affordable housing, but I don't think this is the solution. I can turn to the folks in the Vineyard who have also looked at seasonal housing on the water, and they've decided that it's not really the thing that they want to do, that they want to pursue. They have one houseboat there, and I think they rue that they granted that exception to an artist to sell crafts as a way to, to spawn more commerce. But back to our, our, our future, I would love to see the neighbors of Penzance included in this process. I'd like to see our voice heard in limiting the proliferation, proliferation of these houseboats further. You know, I don't want to see any more additions, I don't want to see any second stories put on these things. We're also concerned about Airbnb-ing. The fact this young man lived in a houseboat that was not his is of concern. Was it rented? You know, is it family and friends, you know, going to be constantly out on these things? How is that going to be regulated? Who's going to supervise it? Who's going to know whether or not it's being Airbnb-ed or not? There's no police out there, you know, except for the occasional, once-a-week visit by the sheriff's, you know, team to sit out there and survey whatever they survey. The other concern, in addition to Airbnb, is the use of, I think you probably got a mooring, because of the, the commercial moorings that don't seem to have any juris, that, there's a problem with the commercial moorings as I see them. I've been the recipient, my family's been the recipient, of the commercial mooring offerings. It's $100 for a town mooring. If you go through Woods Hole Marine to get a mooring, it's like $2,500 per year. My family's been paying that for 40 years. So we've been enriching and supporting Woods Hole Marine. Quisett Harbor's the same way. They have this thing where they've got numerous moorings that they rent out to folks at incredible markups. They do it because the town allows them to do it.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Pierce, but I just think we're getting off the scope of this particular-
I want to bring it back, because I believe that there are a number of commercial moorings inside the proposed zone that could immediately be accessible for people with houseboats, or the intention of putting a houseboat in. They won't be on the waitlist, because a commercial mooring can be rented out to the highest bidder.
May I ask a question of, of Mr. Fraser? And I think you've said this to us a couple times, I just want to make sure I understand. If we don't do anything, none of those concerns that Mr. Pierce has raised really are going to be impacted. In other words, nothing that I have seen is touching upon whether or not a commercial mooring, so in other words, if we do nothing, if we didn't act on this, and someone had a mooring and they wanted to build a houseboat, they could go and build a houseboat?
They would still, by my policy, they would still be required to be within that 600-foot zone.
Correct, but they wouldn't necessarily be required to have the insurance.
Correct.
They wouldn't have the other criteria that you've laid out.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make, I, I just want to make sure I understand that we're actually creating, and we've had, we've had weigh-in from both sides, folks who don't think there should be any regulation, folks like Mr. Pierce who feels that there should be a lot more regulation or prohibition, I think. And I just want to make sure I understand that yours, and tell me if I'm wrong, you're kind of falling in the middle, where you're not radically changing the current proposal, but you're adding for newer, you're, you're adding some layers of maybe protection or regulation-
To address some of the concerns.
-existing and then some future, right?
Yes, exactly.
I just want to make sure I understand that, what our option is as a board. Thank you.
If I could just sort of finish off quickly, or, there are, how many mooring, moorings in the zone? 46? 45? 45. That's a huge number, from 14 to 18. It's a doubling, tripling, depending on your math, of the existing fleet, if they were all taken in time. Build it and they will come, is my fear, and the fear of all my neighbors, is that I'm, we're thankful that it's contained in the zone. Thank you very much for proposing the zone, but nobody wants to see any more of these things, you know? They're not being allowed in any other body of water. They don't, they're not wanted in, in Fairhaven. Yarmouth has a prohibition on them. So I think that we need to stop this, and I think that we should be able, allow these folks, I would, I'd love to introduce a sunset clause if I had a say on a committee where we were sort of, go back and re, redraft this proposal, and sort of look at some alternatives to what Greg has, has written down. I think there's, there's more to be sussed out here, and a lot more issues that, that need to be considered. And I propose that we not vote on this tonight, or we do not approve tonight, but we approve a committee moving forward to look at this issue in a broader sense.
All right, I have another question for Mr. Fraser, if I could.
Thank you. Who's on the second?
Uh, if you finish with- Mr. Fraser, can you comment on what knowledge you have of how many commercial moorings that may be available that are not in use?
There's probably two or three within that zone. Oh, well, if you're including the Clark moorings, which have, you know, there, there's probably maybe less than 10%.
That's four Clark moorings.
Four, four of them, plus there's a Woods Hole Marine one in there.
There's a Quisett Harbor Marine one, there are at least a couple Woods Hole-
Quisett I don't believe is inside the zone, but it may be, if it is, it's, it's very close.
I don't know why they have two in Woods Hole.
Yes.
I have a question. Why is it that Great Harbor is the only place that we have in Falmouth that had, allows-
That's historically how it's been. There's, up until the policy went into effect, there was no prohibition on houseboats going anywhere, but nobody's ever asked it, but-
There was a 1980 prohibition.
That, that, the one you keep referring to applies to marinas. That has gone through the town council's office, the town council's here, and he can say that that bylaw does not apply for moorings. So we cannot, we cannot make a bylaw that isn't designed for moorings to use on moorings, that's not the way it works. That's in the, in the waterway statute, and it clearly states it's for, for marinas. We could not put a houseboat, for instance, in the Falmouth Town Marina. That would violate the bylaw. Falmouth Marine could not put a houseboat on their commercial moorings, because they have commercial moorings attached to their marina. The town does not have that in Woods Hole.
And what are these commercial moorings typically used for? Just to rent out?
For commercials?
Yeah.
Primarily, there's three types. Service, service for the boatyard, most of the boatyards have service moorings, general rental moorings, and it's just not Quisett, it's Green Pond Marina, Green Pond Marina has them. Most of the boatyards, way back in 1997, when the mooring regulations were changed, they capped, any harbor can't have more than 35% as a commercial mooring.
Okay, thank you for that. Any more thoughts or questions from the board? Oh, certainly, come on up.
I think I've done it.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name's Sheila, and I'd just like to give you a perspective of someone that actually owns a houseboat in Woods Hole. Mine's actually a boat. It has engines, it has, um- You're welcome to listen to this, if you'd like. I'm an actual houseboat owner, and I'd just like to give you a perspective, because you generalize them all as one set of, of boats, and that's, that's incorrect.
Excuse me, could you speak to the chair?
Oh, sure, sorry.
That'd be great, thank you.
So I just wanted to give you a perspective on a positive side. I mean, I don't hold lavish parties out there, I'm generally out there by myself. I am fully insured, I have a regular pump-out, I have a full 150-gallon area for disposals. I don't hold lavish parties, I work out there, I use it as an office during the summer. And the, I, I guess I just want to make a perspective from the side that there are different aspects of the houseboats that I think people need to take a look at. It has a very calming sense out in the, in the harbor. And when you talk about the height regulations, I mean, I, I sit on my boat numerous times, and large, large boats come flying past, large sailboats, which are much taller than the houseboat that I'm in, mine's just a single level, but there's lots of large boats out there, there's lots of people that speed through there in the passageways. I think since I've been out there, it's been a very warm, welcoming group of people that are out there, and I just don't want to have you lump all of the houseboats into one segregation to say that there's, they're all different regulations. As I said, I do have full insurance, I do have environmental, I do have solar, I'm completely self-sufficient, I draw rainwater from the area for, for fresh water. So it's a very self-sufficient environment, I only live on it on weekends, and, and it sits in Eel Pond during the winter, and nobody really resides on it. As I said, I have been out there quite a bit, and it's just a, there's a very positive experience from it as well, so I just want to make the board aware of that, that there is a, a positive aspect to the houseboats.
Thank you.
Mr. Fraser? Oh, sorry, what? There's another person in one of these. Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cricket Warner, I am a resident of Woods Hole and a houseboat owner. And I just want to say, everybody might not know the difference between houseboats and houseboats. As Sheila spoke, she has a houseboat. Houseboats have their own motor, which means they propel themselves, and under the regulations of the law, any one of the moorings can have a houseboat. A housefloat is a float without a motor, without a sail, no means, means of propulsion, except for a skiff to move it around. So, you know, under the current, you know, policies, the whole harbor could be filled of houseboats, which usually are one level, and they're made with metal, and, you know, they're, they're econo lodges, so, you know, there is that difference. And yet, a lot of the regulations are talking about making houseboats different from houseboats. And one of the, just in, in brief, on the regulations, there were a couple places with the guidelines, I think, as I said to Mr. Fraser last time, most of these regulations are something that we've been abiding by for years, and, but one of them is the dates that we move. Those are not regulated by us, they're a community effort, that if a boat is in Eel Pond, we can't go in there until that boat is hauled. And like now, in the pandemic, there's not so many trucks, and there's not so much hauling, so we can't move in until those boats are gone. And when those boats want to come back in, we need to leave. So some of the dates in here, we can't necessarily abide by, so if it's a regulation, we might get in trouble for something that is just a community thing that we do to respect everybody. So I just, besides that, I think that most of the regulations make a lot of sense, and again, they're things that we've been abiding by for many years. And I know that there are people that would like to eradicate the houseboats, and if there is a committee that's formed, we'd like to hear about it, and maybe be part of it, so.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? I have another question for Mr. Fraser, if I could. I'd like to find out if there's any way that we can enhance our ability to enforce the pump-out and, and make sure that there's nobody discharging from boats or houseboats. Any ideas on that?
Well, as far as the, the houseboats go, we can certainly reach out to them. If, if this passes, then we will notify them of the new requirements and ask them to start their own log so that they can turn it in to us in December. As far as boats in general, that's a, a very difficult issue, when you have 3,000 moorings and one we don't know, you know, based on the size of a boat, we can have an idea of what it has on board for a holding tank, if it has a holding tank at all. But in order to police that, it, it really would have to be on a complaint-driven basis, because there is no way for us to, when, you know, to, to inspect these vessels and know when they would be illegally discharging. So it would have to be a complaint that would come in, and then we'd go out and, and interview the boat owner, and ask them to provide us with proof of legal disposal.
One thing that this has brought to my mind, and I hope I'm wrong about it, is just the idea that there may be houseboats or boats out there that just don't have holding tanks at all.
There are some, but they have small portable units that can be removed from, from the houseboat with them. So you're correct, some have composting onboard, some just have the, the small marine units that they can just take the, the lower portion of it and discharge it on the, once they get ashore.
So that's-
It's very convenient, by the way. It works very well.
So, so in our pump-out log, that, that would be in there, they would say that this is how they're disposing of it, they have that type of system, and they take it ashore, and they did it 20 times this summer, or however, you know, they have to have a record so that we can review it, but we know that that happens.
One question. Could you just, Greg, could you just speak to the concern that Cricket raised about if there are sort of extenuating circumstances about moving? Can you just speak to how you plan to address that?
Well, I think it would be like any of our regulations. We get requests for waiver of mooring regulations all the time. You know, for instance, we're going through the inspection cycle, we're still dealing with inspections that would do on October 10th. We grant those people waivers. If anybody came up to us and said, I'm waiting for a boat in Eel Pond to move, Woods Hole Marine, or whoever's going to do it is going to do it for us, that's perfectly fine.
I would, I was just, sorry.
Did you want to speak one more time?
If I may, just to address the issue. Fairhaven, again, I use as a model for regulating houseboats, and they have a just, different opinion on portable cassettes and other sanitary devices. And they do not want anything that cannot be accessed by an authorized pump-out boat. In other words, that would give us great assurance that it was not going to be filled up and dumped over the side, right? Take a bucket, you get a compost, and you say in the middle of the night, you just kind of take a few shovels and right over the side. There's no accountability, there's no chain of custody type of thing. I mean, when we have sealed, watertight holding tanks, and they're only accessible by authorized pump-out boats, then that would give us great, greater sense of assurance that the waste is being disposed of properly.
That's going to be for everything. I mean, that's going to be for boats.
That is.
So I think it's another, again-
It is, but for, for regular boats that have holding- It is, but for, for regular boats that have holding tanks, that's how it's done.
Right. I'm just saying, I think it's a, it's a good thing for us to consider, but I think, again, it's outside the scope of this because it really would be a change to our policy writ large for boats on moorings, period. But it's something to, for Mr. Fraser and for this board to discuss.
Well, it could be something going forward for new applications as well.
Yeah. But I think if, if the concern is disposal of waste, it's, I mean, it can happen off of boats just as easily. So I guess, you know, it would probably be something I'd want to have our harbor master weigh in on, not tonight, because it, you know, but.
Yeah, I can just mention the fact that there's very few, how many live boards are there on traditional boats on moorings relative to the?
But I mean, the waste can come from just a day.
Right. And most of the houseboats are much more active than our harbor, Gray Harbor. There are very few live boards. Most is day sailors and day boats and they're not creating any pollution. But the, the houseboats offer a possibility of greater pollution just from the activity from that number, sheer number of people out there when they have these parties, or just the fact they're being used that much more than the typical recreational boat.
I would say lots of larger boats have holding tanks that are set up that can do two things. They can discharge overboard or you can switch and they can be pumped out. We're not allowing those on, under these regulations. They can't have that. So that they, they can't pump out directly into the water. The only thing would be different if someone's taking a portable unit out. The whole fact is that they're making the effort to remove and take the portable unit. They're not just going to turn and dump it into the water. You know, they're very conscious of that not happening.
So then on a new uh, houseboat or float, would the holding tank be required?
If they have a holding tank, it can only discharge to a pumpout, a pumpout boat. But they could use a composting arrangement or a portable arrangement.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Are we ready to?
Um, I, yes, I would move that we, unless there's any other comments, I would move that we close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
And are we ready to make a decision?
I am. I don't know if anybody else.
Yeah, I am.
So I'll put a motion just to put it out there. I would move approval of the um, new regulations as drafted by uh, Mr. Fraser.
Second.
The only comment I would have for the uh, for that is, Mr. Fraser, if you get uh, two or three applications in the near future, can we bring this back before you approve them so we can consider whether or not we've created a problem here?
Uh, certainly I could do that, yeah. Yep.
My only concern is the proliferation.
Yep, but in, you know, I think that the number of moorings is limited. And you really expect, what, what's happening is people who have standard boats are choosing to put a houseboat on their mooring. That's what's going to have to happen, right? Somebody's going to have to vac, you know, get rid of their, their original boat and put it alternative.
It does take a little while because they have to apply to change. Any vessel or anything that's on the mooring has to have approval for us to change it. So they have to come to the office, then they will be, have to prove that they're adhering to the, the current regulations. So that process will take a little while.
Okay. And we can always revisit this. At least it's a start. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is there uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to have to get started somewhere. If we plan, we have to do some more revising, we can.
Right.
Yeah. I'm going to change this clock because it's making me crazy. Because I keep thinking we are so far behind that.
Get that hour back, huh?
Yeah.
No, no, we have one more hearing.
Oh, I'm just going to move, yes. So we had a request for the, I'll read the public notice. Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under chapter two forty-seven seven, Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, fifty-nine Town Hall Square on the application of Teague Campbell for permission to reconstruct the pier, ramp and floe on the same general footprint as the existing dock in the waters of Rans Canal located at one forty-seven Bay Road Extension, North Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is Rans Canal. Interested parties may review the file in this hearing at the Office of Select Board. This was published October one, October eighth in the Falmouth Enterprise. And that hearing had been continued on that date till today's date. And I would move that we, at the request of the applicant, continue it to December sixth. Is December sixth a good date? They said December sixth or later.
That's a meeting night either the sixth or two weeks hence.
Maybe two weeks after that. They said if it's full and I'm guessing the sixth is probably pretty full since it's a first after.
Second.
So to December twentieth at seven thirty PM. That would be my motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
And next we have discussion on COVID nineteen issues and I don't see Mr. McGann, so let's postpone that.
There he is.
Oh, there you are.
Their gang in the shadows.
Hiding.
I've just been dreaming about getting a houseboat. I was in the zone.
That's awesome. Just give me one second, please. Try to be brief. I was going to say that.
I heard that.
Stretching my legs.
So good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So last couple of weeks, we've actually had some, a pretty good week. We had um, twenty and seventeen, twenty and fourteen, seventeen. And so this week in orange, um, we've got sixteen for the week. We're about halfway through the week, a little bit more than halfway, roughly halfway through the week that I, I call. So we're a little bit heavier this week, but we're still sort of in that, I would say, right around between fifteen and thirty per week. Um, and it depends, you know, one of the things that does, that does depend is, you know, we've seen a couple triple households type of things. So you tend to, you know, if it happens, it happens three or four times, there's twelve or nine or ten cases in a given week. And I saw a couple, I think I saw a quad household, or a poor household, if you're listening, um, have a go through four, you know, a couple of children, my, you know, mom and dad and so forth. So, um, but we don't, we've actually had, you know, if you see, it's, it's been better for the last, um, the last couple, last three weeks now. Um, looking at our, obviously when we have a couple of good weeks, you have a, a lower incidence rate for a hundred thousand. So eight point seven is our daily rate if Falmouth had a population of a hundred thousand. So that's roughly about a couple of cases a day, two to three cases per day. And if you see is among our peers, all of Massachusetts was sixteen. So we're about half of what the state was in that two-week timeframe. Um, and similar with other towns with the, you know, you see Bourne had a, a week that was higher and Yarmouth had a week that was higher. And there's been an ebb and flow. We have been on that side of it a couple of times as well. There's definitely an ebb and flow to this. Um, if you look at the data from the county, it sort of does that same ebb and flow since, since uh, Delta and a high vaccination rate. That's kind of what's happening. You're not seeing big giant spikes. You're seeing sort of an ebb and flow. You have weeks of, of maybe forty and then it kind of falls off to a week of the teens. Um, and our percent positivity has been quite good. That's one point six one. It's better, it's better, roughly a little bit less than the state average and uh, on the bottom half of our peers. So that's a good sign. Um, hospitalizations, two consecutive, uh, I got an eleven-one report and eleven-four report, both uh, zero for Falmouth, yay. Um, so that tells us that we're not having a problem, an issue in the hospitals. Um, bit more at Cape Cod. They have a higher, much larger hospital. But um, so all that indicates that we're in fairly good shape. Um, you know, when we talk about things like, you know, mask mandates and so forth, the line in the sand is, uh, in areas, and this is from the CDC, from areas of substantial or high infection rate. Now, we're both uh, in the low. We were in the moderate for incidents, but we weren't anywhere near substantial. I think we'd need to be somewhere in the hundred and twenty cases per week range uh, to get into substantial. So our positivity in both, the positivity in the incidence rate is on the low side. Um, and then of course, we, I just went over the hospitalizations and I'll talk about vaccinations today. So there were four hundred and six doses administered during this past week and that's the highest we've had in a while. And I think that's got something to do with some of the businesses requiring it. I think you're going to, you see it. You can, you can see the age bracket where you see the increases is at the twenty to sixty-four, those three age brackets. So it would indicate the workforce. So I think you're seeing an increase in vaccinations because some businesses are starting to require it. So if you look at, uh, we're at eighty-three first dose. This is the entire population, seventy-four fully vaccinated. Uh, ninety-two percent of all eligible residents have had at least one dose and eighty-two percent are fully vaccinated. Those numbers will actually go down. So the bottom will go down because eligibility changed for five to eleven. So we're starting at zero. So that number will go down. Um, the state gives this report, what they'll add a category in probably in the next report or the one after. We get, I get these on Thursday. They'll have a group that's five to eleven. Um, because they've became eligible about a week ago. A little bit about boosters, nothing's changed. If you've had Pfizer, Moderna and you're had at least six months ago, you're over sixty-five or eighteen, live in a long-term care, uh, eighteen have an underlying medical condition or eighteen in a high-risk setting, um, you're, you're free to get a booster dose. There's plenty of availability. I check it usually once a week and I usually see an appointment. You may even be able to get one tonight. They actually, CVS goes real late with their, with theirs. And J and J, anybody over eighteen uh, after two months. And you can mix uh, vaccines. So if you've got J and J and you wanted to have Moderna, you could do that. So, um, that's, nothing's changed on that. Uh, the five to eleven, they're approved. It's a third dose of Pfizer. Pediatricians, I think, are starting to get them or have gotten them. And we've scheduled our first Falmouth Public School Clinic on Friday. So now with the next couple of weeks or so we'll go through and, um, so, I mean, you know, some parents may want to do it through the pediatricians, but if they do want to do it at the school, we'll have that opportunity. I filled out a form and they gave us three hundred doses, so I'm glad I filled out the form. You know, you get some of these things from the state. I said, sure, you know, put our, I mean, put our PIN number in and um, VNA called me last week and said, hey, three hundred doses came in. I said, great. We'll uh, we'll get rocking and rolling with them. So we have three hundred and, you know, we'll ask for more. State's probably going to do what they did last spring and say, got to get rid of those before we entertain getting you more. So we'll go from there. Um, a couple of new things, uh, a couple of oral treatments I thought was really cool. Uh, Paxil, Paxilbit, that's new. Um, that's an oral treatment you would take at home. And that's really encouraging. That'd be nice to be able to take a pill, um, for, for, for the most of us. And well, new Piravir. Ah, see, I think I did that one all right. That one's also out there too. That one, that was originally designed for the flu. So there's a couple oral uh, pills that you may be able to take. I don't know if you guys have read that. So that's actually a really encouraging thing. So that's, that's nice to see. Um, so that's what I have for slides. And lastly, you got town meeting coming up and um, I believe you guys are going to require masks at the um, you're going to have people there together, elbow to elbow for, for quite some time. So um, that's great. And so is there any questions on that or any questions you got in general?
I don't have a question about that. Anybody else?
Well, just, just on the report, um, this past week, I was not able to see your briefing that you posted through FCTV, neither, either from my own personal email account or from the town's email account.
Oh, so from our website, it's not active? The code didn't work? Okay. So that's probably why Jeff from FCTV sent it to me a second time over the weekend without a note. So maybe I'll just cut. It takes, I could do it when I go downstairs. It's pretty easy to throw that on there.
Thanks. I share it with a lot of people. So.
I have a question about the uh, what, can you remind me the name of the drug that people take once they realize that they're positive that tries to reduce the symptoms? Do you know that?
Rindesivir?
Yeah. Is that the one that, yeah.
Monoclonal antibodies?
That's, the hospital will do that one. That's, that's intravenous. So these are actually, you take home and get a pill, kind of like Tamiflu, you know? So that's encouraging if you could, you know, you know, give it to someone.
Not go to a hospital because you don't need to be.
Yeah. Um, vaccine, you know, Delta's, you're, you're, you're probably twice as likely, I think somewhere around twice as likely to end up in the hospital than you would have if you had the uh, COVID, COVID, the original version, I guess you'd call it. So.
And I do know that the pediatricians have it in town. My daughter has an appointment for Thursday. I didn't even, I was calling for the flu shot. I was surprised they already had it. So.
Yeah, I knew they were getting it in. I just, you know, without talking, I know, I know Falmouth PD, PD did. Um, but I didn't want to speak for all of them. I know.
Bramble Bush does. I can say that.
Yep. So there you go. It's the two majors, sort of pediatrician's office. And, and some parents will be more comfortable doing it that way. Some will be fine with doing it at school. It's up to the individual. We'll, we'll have it available.
It's a great offer that you make for the.
Yeah, I wish it was that easy to get the vaccines by filling out a simple form back in uh, uh, February, huh? March. That's how I was hoping it was going to happen. You know, you just fill out a form, I'll take, I'll take thirty thousand today, please. And they sent it to us. If that was, that would have made life a little bit easier for, at least for me. So.
Scott, I know you're here a lot on Mondays, but not every Monday that we meet. Sometimes you come in after hours to give us these updates. I'm wondering if the board feels like, are we almost at a point where we're not really needing these in-person updates?
Well, only if, um, if there's a caution that he needs to announce and this is a vehicle to get it out. So you think it would be wise?
Put in so much overtime over the last two years. I feel like I, I don't want to just abuse this.
I'll bring that up tomorrow, Julia.
Wants you to say that again a little louder.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. I mean, it's, I mean, we're off schedule now, so I'm actually didn't have a board health meeting today for some reason. Yeah, we don't need to.
But will you continue to do the Friday updates with FCTV? And I think if we have those, I don't think that we necessarily need Scott to come in on Monday nights unless, of course, you determine that there's something we need to know.
Yeah. And then I would leave that. If the cases are, if they're just, yeah, we can, I can almost, it's almost like you can sense it. Like I can feel it, like looking at the cases and looking where they might be coming from. It's going to be a bad next, you know, if it looks like it's going to be like a three or four weeks of disaster.
And you feel like you want to come in and tell us something. Let's leave it at that. But I don't feel like Mr. McGann has to keep coming here every, every time we meet.
I agree. I think he's already doing a lot.
Congratulations. It's been a long time.
Thanks.
Well, but there's an exception.
Can I ask a quick question?
Certainly. Well, but while you're coming up, there's the exception of whether we're hitting into a time when you think there's going to be a greater risk because of the holidays and that sort of thing. Do a public service announcement if you could.
We could do that now before you go.
Barb Schneider, precinct four. I, we, we had our booster scheduled for the Monday after the storm and we received an email saying that it had been canceled. And when I called and got ahold of um, the, the pharmacy that was going to issue it, they told us that all the, all the booster shots, all the vaccine, basically south of Boston, through the Cape, had been quarantined because much of it had not been under generator refrigeration. And I'm just asking Scott if he knows if all of that was then thrown out and ruined and they had to forfeit all that or if they found that not to be ruined.
The pharmacies are not on, I'm not on the pharmacies program. So that's directly fed. So it's going to be between them and the feds. So the answer to that is they've loosened up the storage requirements um, for the deep freeze. I'm sure they're going to embargo them and then try to make a determination of time out of, out of temp control. And if they feel that it's been out of temp control for exceeding what they would have for a parameter, then they're going to toss them. If they feel, you know, they should be under a, a freezer with an alarm system or at least a data logger that would require it. And if they were, um, there should be giving, you know, hourly feedback on temperature. So like if you look at a large grocery store chain, I, I worked for them. I was able to, you know, go on to Bangor Maine's refrigerators and look at how they're doing. So if they have that sort of technology, then they should be able to determine that it was out for X hours and now it needs to be used within thirty days. And they have this sort of, then, then they probably may not toss them. Um, but they would toss them if they've exceeded their parameters. But they're not going to give me that information only because I don't, we never dealt directly, the pharmacies deal directly with the feds for the most part. But um, it's possible. Possible. And you should be able to, you've got your appointment pretty, pretty quick.
We drove a long way to get the.
Well, you picked the wrong, you picked the wrong week. So next time, don't pick one during a storm and you'd probably be okay. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much, Scott.
Next up, we have a report from the Commission on Substance Use.
Welcome.
Open it here that it's way down.
I know.
All right.
Also because we don't track numbers. So, so Beverly Costa Ciavola, I am the co-chair of the Falmouth Commission on Substance Use. Thanks for having us here tonight. And uh, with me is one of our newest commissioners, Samantha Bauer. Um, and I'm going to be really brief. I don't have um, any, I, I've been out with um, knee surgery. So I'm way behind on everything. And of course, our meeting was canceled because of the storm. So um, we're rescheduled for November eighteenth at five thirty.
Are you okay with standing? Cause we can pull a chair.
Nope, I'm fine. Yep. Nope, I'm fine. You don't want me sitting down? I'd be like way down here. No.
Well, we can scoot the mic over there to you.
Um, so no, I'm fine. Um, so, no, I'm fine. Um, uh, so, uh, we were happy to fill our two vacancies that we had, um, on the commission with Samantha Bauer and Mauro Titus. Um, Samantha, some of you may know from Inspiration is Everything, is Everywhere, uh, the nonprofit in Falmouth that she, that she runs, that does considerable, um, work around substance use, particularly, uh, uh, abstinence and, uh, events and activities, um, for people that are substance-free. And so we thought that was a really good partnership for, for Sam to come on. And then Mauro Titus, who came to us through the, um, League of Women Voters, she was originally, um, they had sort of planted her with us to, um, uh, do updates. And she was impressed with the work that we were doing and so, um, uh, petitioned to be a, a commissioner and so she, and the added thing also is that she is a writer with the enterprise. So we get some free, um, perks there, so, um, so they are new members as of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we will be losing one member, um, which is my co-chair, um, Chad Faulkner, so we will be, uh, posting that other, um, opening. And we will be voting on a, a co-chair to assist, uh, to assist me. So, you know, as with most things, um, the last two years have been very difficult. That we haven't had a lot of opportunity to do the things that we would have liked to do. For instance, the, um, the, uh, hidden and plain sight trailer that the police department has, we, we could not do anything with that in the last couple of years, which has really been a shame. And so, you know, we want to start working with Chief Dunn again to see what we can do about placing that out in the community and promoting, um, promoting that, uh, so that more people can get out there and understand what maybe some of the things that you might, might want to look for in your teenager's bedroom. Thank God I don't have one of those anymore. Um, so what we did, what we were able to do this past year was we participated in the, um, Opiate Use Disorder Awareness Day, uh, that promotes online screening. Um, and we continue to support the sober housing efforts within Falmouth and to, um, promote, uh, the MASH, the Mass Alliance for Sober Housing. Um, we have been, uh, really trying to get the, um, sober housing managers and owners to really have some conversations, not through us, but just, you know, forming their own sort of little group that they can talk about what some of their challenges and successes are. So, um, you know, we, we still work towards, um, trying to do that. Um, we're, we're launching a speaker series, um, as of September, but of course it's, it's been difficult again. So we're hoping to get that back up, uh, and be able to do that maybe possibly in December, but most definitely at, at our January meeting. And we've already lined up, um, you know, doing, uh, Moms Do Care through Duffy Health, um, WellStrong, who we've had a really, um, significant relationship with, um, and the AIDS Support Group of Kate Todd, who we've also had a significant relationship with, so. Um, uh, Mauro Titus did put an article in the paper back in July, um, highlighting, um, yours truly, uh, as, as the, at that time I was the chair. And so, um, what we're looking at is, is being able to do like a little, um, introduction to all of the commissioners over the course of a, of a year. Just to give a little bit of background about, you know, what interested them about coming onboard at the commission and that, and that the work that they do. Um, our FY twenty-one budget, of course, we did not spend down, um, unfortunately. But again, it was due to the fact that COVID kept us from being able to, uh, do the things that we, we really had planned on doing in our, in our planning. Um, but we were able to do, um, we supported, uh, a sponsorship ad for the Mass Opiate Awareness, uh, Screening Day. Um, and we also sponsored, um, a Chronic Marijuana Use in Teens webinar. Um, so we were able to do those things. Uh, and then our ongoing activities, like keeping the rack cards, um, up at the Rack Center and any, anywhere else that, you know, the other businesses and, and organizations that want them. Um, you know, continuing to support Chief Dunn and the Falmouth Police Department around, uh, hidden and plain sight. And, um, just trying to expand, uh, different ways that we can, um, uh, bring awareness about treatment and recovery pathways to the, uh, to the people of, um, of Falmouth. So, um, I'll take any questions from either you guys or, um, anyone in the audience if.
Questions or comments? I'd just like to thank you for the work you're doing, cause it's so important and there's so much to do.
Yeah, there is.
And you know, we haven't had any real, uh, comments raised lately about the sober houses. I think the MASH initiative is really important.
Yes, we do too.
Once they get that information and they start to use it, it really makes things work better.
Yeah. And I didn't know if, um, oh.
No, I, I was just gonna say, I think it would be great as you start to have events or hear about other events, like, you know, I know, um, even just social events, like some of these sort of, um, outings, you know, at different places. And I see them come up in my feed just myself, but, you know, where it's, um, you know, just a sober event, right? Where you have mocktails and those kind of things. If we hear that, if you filter that and we can make some of those announcements, you know, we're happy to do that, especially as we kind of go into winter, which is a really challenging time for lots of folks, right? When that social isolation and some of that job, you know, constricts a bit.
Is that something that, that could be put on, uh, the town, uh, cause I could have Susan, Susie Hartman, you know, help to facilitate getting that out?
Yeah, probably, and even us announcing it, you know, under, we do our announcement.
Say we're having this happening, uh, on the website, but please make a mention of it.
And I didn't know if Samantha wanted to come up and speak about those at all, cause she's had quite a few of them over the course of, prior to her coming onboard as a commissioner, but also, um, um, since she's been with us, so.
There. Samantha Bauer, I'm a commission member. Um, so, yeah, so Inspiration is Everywhere, my nonprofit, um, we just have a, the past year, a new office that's at twenty-four Spring Bars Road. So we've got a nice thirteen-hundred square foot room and we've been really trying to push, um, like a garnering of interest in the community to utilize our space as an alternative entertainment space for dance parties or movie nights or book clubs or get-togethers, anything like that, that takes place in a substance-free environment. So that's for anyone in recovery, people under twenty-one who really want to socialize, especially in the winter when things close early. Um, and, you know, just anyone else who, you know, might want to just do a substance-free type of social event. Um, and we do have enough space and an outdoor, like, sided backyard so that everyone can be, you know, safely distanced. And, um, a lot of our larger events, we've had a, a participation cap that you have to sign up through our website. Um, but yeah, so I mean, you know, in terms of events, we can definitely keep you guys updated on, um, some of the things we've been doing. We started doing a bi-monthly movie night that has a discussion afterwards. Um, but our space is, you know, it's open generally ten to four, and it's really just an, an open space for anyone who needs a place to be. So there's, you know, if someone's trying not to use or go to a bar, go to a, a place with, you know, negative influence in their lives, they can come in and watch movies on our computer. They can read books. We've got free art supplies for anyone to use. Um, you just sit on the couch and take a nap if you need to on a slow day. Um, so we're really working hard with the commission to be able to extend that outreach, um, just with, in terms of availability for people to have that space in our community.
So where is twenty-three Spring Bars? Is that on the corner?
Twenty-four, it's like across from the, the Plaza, the side of Cappies.
Okay.
Um, and there's a Falmouth Commons Plaza there, so there's a, a few different buildings that are in that area.
You gotta sign out front? You gotta sign out front?
Um, we've got, we don't have a sign yet. We've been trying to work with, um, whichever sign company the, the landlord used. But we did paint lots of rainbow paint signs all over our windows.
So you can't miss it?
So you can't miss it. It's the building that's covered in rainbow, different, you know, letters and pictures and, yeah, so it's very bright.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, and, and I just want to add, um, you know, on, on behalf of that is that, you know, I, I think that's one thing that Falmouth needs to be very proud of, is the young people that are stepping up, um, to take care of things like this, right? That they're trying to look, um, after their neighbors and really encouraging them to get into recovery and to look at treatment programs and to find places like, um, Inspiration is Everywhere, where they can be accepted for whatever's going on in their life, and, um, we're all very, very proud of her, so. All right?
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, next we have a presentation from the Beach Committee.
As Joe hands these out, I'll, I'll begin. My name is Margie Mitchell and I'm the current Chair of the Beach Committee. And I will begin with a brief background and introduction, why we're here this evening. The committee would first like to express our gratitude to the board and to Mr. Suso for adding us to a very busy agenda this evening to present and discuss the staffing crisis, not only facing the Falmouth Beach Department, but other departments and towns throughout the Cape and New England. We'd also like to acknowledge that Mr. Suso recognized this issue last summer and addressed it by adjusting the pay schedule for the staff. He got the ball, ball rolling for sure. Um, the Beach Committee jumped into this situation with both feet, with all our expertise and fierce determination, despite being short a few committee members. Presently, our board consists of former selectmen, school and finance committee members, town meeting members, a parent of the beach staff, and the daughter of a former chair of the Beach Committee, my mother, Ellen T. Mitchell. Um, my mother worked with Bruce Magado for years. He fondly called her a force in regards to the tenacity for all things Falmouth beaches. It's a little background about our committee. The Beach Committee and the Beach Department researched and collected data from all the towns on the Cape. Tonight, we will present our compensation recommendation for the season twenty-twenty-two and appropriate adjustment for wages for the next five years. Reviewing staff data, we acknowledge that even before COVID, that we were experiencing staff shortages due to young men and women looking for lucrative pay scales in other positions. As many of you, as, as many of you know, this past season, we could not compete with companies that paid more. We all know that Stop &amp; Shop and Burger King paid eighteen dollars an hour, Shaw's and Dunkin' Donuts like seventeen. And I know of a young man that was offered twenty dollars an hour to do wash dishes in Woods Hole. The past season did put a strain on the staff to operate with, without the following positions that went unfilled. We had a three-point-five loss in the, uh, parking lot attendance and a fifteen-point-four out of fifty-eight lifeguards. As a result, McGansett and MBL Beaches were greatly affected as they were not staffed at all, all season. Um, throughout the summer, other beaches were closed due to staff shortages. This resulted in loss of services, not only to the visitors of Falmouth, but also to its residents. And Maggie, Bruce, and the committee members received numerous complaints on this issue. And in addition, this past season resulted in loss of revenue from fees not collected when we had to close the beaches. Um, moving forward, the, the remaining committee members this evening will introduce themselves and continue with our presentation. Again, our thanks for your consideration and a special thank you to, uh, Mr. Brown for attending our meetings and, and, uh, being there as we hold our discussion.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Quigg. I'm the alternate, um, Beach Committee member. Hoping to make that difference soon. Um, so we identified the problems. We've worked very hard on this as a committee. Uh, it was a real collaborative effort, uh, for all of us. Um, and we weren't the only town having these shortages, as I think you're all aware of. Um, as Margie mentioned, we had to close some of the beaches. They just never opened, uh, and we were short-staffed. Um, and the number of workers available for these jobs, um, they've been decreasing over the summer. And just because people fill out applications, uh, history showed that, uh, they may not actually show up to try out. There's a higher percentage of students that take classes year-round now. Colleges require students, uh, to report earlier for fall term. Affordable rentals were almost non-existent. Uh, the pool of workers were limited to only those who live here or who have a relative who live here. Certification classes were not available during the pandemic, and it takes weeks and months of training, uh, for lifeguards to be qualified. We did our homework as a, a committee. We reached out to other Cape towns, um, and, uh, to see how they were proceeding. And, uh, they had just about the same problems as, as we did. And, uh, we asked them, uh, what their rates were, what kind of plans they had. Uh, and as you can see, Falmouth was, uh, the lowest paid, uh, in this position, Capewide. Uh, the only exception was the National Seashore. They're on a different pay scale, uh, so we did not include that. Various towns, and we've kicked around the same ideas, um, possibly to have a junior lifeguard program, which we've talked a lot about and, and would like to pursue in the future. Also going with, uh, high school do better, uh, recruitment so that we can retain these kids up until Labor Day. And so if you have any questions, it's pretty self-explanatory, um, how the other towns, uh, went about and fared this summer. Uh, but pretty much they suffered the same consequences that we had. So I'm gonna turn it over to Joe. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. I'm Joe Strazula. The Beach Committee is making some recommendations to the board tonight. And those recommendations basically say we need to increase the pay. If we're gonna compete with other communities, lifeguards need to get paid what is comparable to their skill level. And the unusualness of this particular group of individuals is that they are being hired for a job that only exists for a short period of time. We must get them in, trained, and on the beaches quickly and hold them as long as possible. So that's why we are recommending that the rate go up to a starting pay of nineteen dollars a, and so be adjusted for senior staff or staff on a pay scale that starts at that rate. We are also recommending that the, um, parking attendants be at sixteen dollars an hour and adjust for staff, uh, growth as far as their seniority. We also added this year a very successful program using the funds that we already had because we were understaffed, therefore we had a few extra dollars to spend. We had guards on the beaches on sunset hours. They went from the four o'clock usual disappearance of the guards, uh, and attendance to, um, not the lifeguards, the gate guards, uh, till seven to seven-thirty, depending on when we could get them there. And the, um, town manager was very cooperative in helping with that transition because this was also necessary because of, uh, crowd control. Vehicles would just pack these lots to the point where nobody could accept, get in there if there was an emergency. And that was very successful and we got an awful lot of praise for that kind of coverage. And we would like to see that continue into the future. Our beaches are a public resource that we can't ignore. Um, we worked on steps that we, uh, to have these increases be annual so that anybody coming to the job would know that if they stayed with us two or three years, what they could anticipate for revenue. Not something that was set each year and could be changed. So we'd like to have those, uh, pay scale done as an automatic increase year to year and have it be predictable. And we also would like to re-gen, re-energize our, uh, lifeguard aid and junior lifeguard program so that we have a feeder system for kids to come up from our own ranks in Falmouth to, uh, become guards in the future. Um, we also would like to reimburse the cost of your certification. It can cost up to two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars for a brand-new guard to be certified, go through the training, get the course and so forth. And we'd like to reimburse them for that, for that training so that they will know that if they come to us, we're going to recognize their service. We already have in the budget a line item of thirty-five hundred dollars that the staff would develop, um, use for staff development and for. development and for other kinds of reimbursements for expenses that are incurred because most of these employees are younger and they have expenses that they can't cover out of their own pocket and out of their own salary. And we're also trying to figure out a way to carry those end-of-season. When August 15th or thereabouts come and the road races over, we lose our coverage on the beaches so that the kids or young people go back to their schools, they go back to wherever. We need to figure out a way to cover our beaches through September to at least Labor Day weekend, whenever that might be. I gave you a, passed out a sheet, which is the next one, and I did that because the numbers are very small up here. And unfortunately, this is a little blurry because of the way it was transposed, but you can get the picture. Right now, in our last budget, year '21, we exceeded our expenses by revenue generated by almost $369,000. So that the beaches, as an entity, runs a good business model, if you want to put it that way. The reimbursement does not come from the tax base. It comes from the user base, the people who pay to go to Old Silver or to any of our parking lots that pay. We collect that money. People who buy a parking permit to go to the beaches voluntarily, that feeds into our revenue. So our revenue side is always higher than our expenditure side, to the point where we have been able to, as you can see, transfer money into free cash at the end of each year. Unfortunately, that system also doesn't make that free cash come back to enhance the beaches. We have to request that in our budgets, and we're going to be working on that in this next year to try to get reinvestment in our assets. Our asset is the beaches, and then the most important asset we have. We're recommending a 26% increase over a period of five years for the staff members, for this, I'm sorry, 26% increase for this next year from the present level of staffing costs to the new rate if we go from our $15 to our $19 per hour as far as the starting rate is concerned. That may seem like a radical number, but the point is that we haven't had a raise in the salaries for years. We're making up for past flat-line salary points. The other part of it is that we're going to recommend ways to bring in additional revenue to cover that cost so that our net will be the same. Our profit line, if you want to call it a profit line, and we should because this is a service that is paid for by the public that uses it, we need to call that as it is. But as you can tell from the general revenue that's been collected over these years from 2014 to 2021, you can see that we've only had a $65,000 increase in incoming revenue for the last seven years. That is not a good sustaining model. Our infrastructure on the beaches is diminishing. We'll go to the next slide. This is our analyzation in comparison to other towns on the Cape, both for the supervisory staff at the top and lifeguards at the bottom. Those that can see it, you can see that the yellow is Falmouth and the rest of the towns around us. We're still in the lower tier. And when someone has been certified as a guard or as other, they will look at where they should go to other communities where they might make a little more money. And we've already had a year where we've had to keep beaches closed. So our recommendation is to try to enhance our staff, cover all our beaches 100% of the time that we need them and not have any beaches closed in this coming season. So now I'll pass over to Barb, and she can pick up the presentation.
Barb Schneider, Beach Committee. So we've given you a chart here that shows a survey of the number of beach permits for the different towns and how they charge. And this is where we try to give you the model of, we can help find ways to make more money because we want you to spend more money to keep our staff in place and to give us experienced lifeguards year after year. So if we go to our recommendations, you will see we are recommending, and this is with a lot of research that we've done from other towns and seeing what people's price point is on what they would be willing to pay, we are encouraging you to raise, we encourage you to raise the daily fee of Old Silver from $20 to $30. I know that's huge, but it is absolutely in line with what is expected now and what is being charged elsewhere for the same kind of thing. We are asking for a raise of $15 daily fee at Minot and Surf Drive to go up to $20. And we are now asking that motorcycles, which now pay nothing currently, are charged as any motor vehicle because in truth, they do take up a spot. Motorcycles today cost a pretty penny. They are usually wider than the old-fashioned, old Indian motorcycles, and they need a space. And no change in the current $40 seasonal parking pass for residents and no change in swim instruction fees. In other words, residents don't, people that are regular users would not see that increase. I hope that what you will take away from what we've done is that we've given you six people's best effort at doing an awful lot of research to help you in where you go with this and to show you that there are ways we can fix what happened this past year. It is still not going to be easy to get young people to do these jobs because we really have less young people to do them. But what we need to do is find ways to be incentivizing our young people to stay with a job more than one year. And also, we're hoping that you will see that we're really undercharging for this phenomenal asset we have here for our beaches, and we need that to be something we think about. And at this point, we would all be glad to answer any questions to our process. We've really given this our best shot for a lot of months, and I don't want you to think we're trying to overstep anything here. We just thought we could help do an awful lot of good go-getting for you.
Who's got the first question?
I have a question. Can we go back to this chart, Barb?
Yes, sure.
I don't know if you want to take it or anybody else. I just want to make sure I understand how this chart works. So Falmouth is highlighted with the yellow, and down at the bottom, the lifeguard, the pay listed here is $1,458. And now, it says recommendation, so I'm not really clear what I'm looking at.
For next year. So remember, this is for 2022.
Okay.
And this would break down, we had, we worked with staff to find out where we really have people and anticipate where they would fall and what positions we have to fill. And that's what we have here. It's using our best knowledge of where we were this past year, where we would move to with that staff the next year, and that's what we're giving you.
So is step one where we were this year?
Step one is where we were on average this year.
Okay.
You've got to average these out because you get people who have been two years, three years, four years in the positions. They get different steps.
So this page saying recommendation is maybe a little misleading because this is showing the existing, right?
It's showing the existence scaled out in a three-year pattern, a three-step pattern.
But take it a year out, so take it to next year, right?
Yeah, this is not, this is not the future. This is the present, in our present step rate compared to others in other areas. There would be a significant increase in the lifeguard positions. The other staff members would be a different category. Beach supervisor and assistant, those are the clerks in the office and the office staff. That was done a little bit based on the present scenario. And this will require some work with the town manager and personnel looking at this from the standpoint of what is going to impact the budget. We're only focusing tonight on the lifeguards and parking attendant recommendations. Those are the soldiers, those are the foot soldiers out in the field. This advisory and bank superintendent or supervisor is one of our clerks. Some people have different names for them. So they're the ones that collect the money. The beach superintendent, assistant superintendent, and beach superintendent are salaried employees. So we haven't, we haven't got all the numbers because we're not privy to that. We took it from what is existing and tried to transpose that into what a guesstimate would be. The bulk of it is that with our recommendation on the increased fees and with our recommendation on the increased lifeguard starting rate and the parking attendant starting rate, these should wash each other out. We should, we should be able to pay for the increased salaries with the increased fees. And because the fees are coming from outside users, basically, and people who voluntarily buy a parking permit, it's not coming from an imposed fee, if you want to put it that way.
Unresidents.
Unresidents. If you wish to buy a parking permit, you buy a parking permit. If you don't wish to, you don't. So we're trying to make it a non-tax increase, but a service increase, if you want to put it that way.
So we saw one page that had a couple of recommendations for pay increase suggestions, but we don't have any kind of chart that seems those recommendations.
You could send us. I was going to ask if they can send us their PowerPoint.
Yes.
Okay, right.
Because we don't have that.
Yes.
It would be helpful for me to at least see what they recommend.
Because these pages here just really show us existing.
What's happening now, it's so.
We did, we just provided the smaller print.
Saying is that recommendation, it's not really a recommendation listed on that page.
I know, where it says recommendation.
It's misleading in that regard.
It is, it is. So if you send, if you send us your PowerPoint, though, we would have it.
We'll definitely do that, no problem. And I wanted to point out that we're trying, we're trying here to give you a way to look at this so that, most important was to not just say eat up that extra money that Joe explained comes in. That's not the goal here. The goal was to respect that the towns depended on that forever, but there's a way that we are definitely undercharging and can make up a lot of that. And I wanted to just say one other thing. We have another member of the committee that hasn't spoken tonight, but I do want to recognize that Dan Shearer is here, and he's been a longstanding member of the Beach Committee and has put a lot into this and helped a lot with the discussion of the fiscal responsibility of this all. So I wanted to recognize Dan, too. Any other questions?
Well, as I attended your last meeting that I was at, I remember you had some good news about the trash pickup and some other things. The vendor was pretty effective on the porta-potties, so if you want to touch on that, that's always good to hear.
We were very happy with the fact that we've had some change in how trash is going as far as getting picked up. There's been wonderful volunteer base that's going to the beaches in addition to where you see them along 28 and so on. They're really being attentive to the beaches. It's become quite a thing that there's these regular pickups now. And that's been, one of the things we noted was through this entire summer, and I know that the DPW didn't get very many extra people onboard as much as they tried, we had no complaints about trash pickup as far as there being less pickup than there has been. And we also noted that things were being kept more clean because of that. And also the fact that you've been leaving a trash barrel down off-season has been really helpful as far as people abandoning bags of dog poop and so on. And so that's really been good, and that's much appreciated by everybody. Our one complaint we heard was when we started closing, not having staff on the beaches in the middle of August, we did get complaints from our residents, why would I bother buying a permit? You're only doing this for six weeks. We can figure out other ways to get to a beach. And that was a kind of unfortunate thing to start to hear. We heard that pretty regularly. People felt middle of August is not okay to start to have no staff on the beach. There were jellyfish stings and no one to attend to them, no one to give first aid, cuts, whatever, just even that simple a thing. So this is where our discussion goes as a Beach Committee and how do we provide a healthy, happy environment for the full season.
And I mean, of course, that's in the larger context of nationwide employment crisis. And we have that sort of special demographic challenge year after year, but obviously, we're in the certain, you know, post, well, we're not post-COVID, but we're still within the COVID economic impact that I think, you know, we've seen everywhere.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. And then Margie wants to show you something we did, too. One of the things that was reported to us by the staff, including the superintendent, was the amount of usage of the beaches. We exceeded all previous capacity uses. The parking lots were full from the time they opened in the morning until the sun set on the western side. The eastern side, the beaches were utilized all day long, even after attendants left the beaches. The parking lots were used for lunch, for outside space. We have gotten used to outside space. Our outside space has never been used as much and as consistently as the last 18 months. And it's showing in every, it's showing in wear and tear, but it's also showing in the fact that people are enjoying the outside. So we want to keep that momentum going. And to that effect...
Just speaking to the fact that some of the positive things with the beaches, one of the things that we were able to do was educate the public a little bit better by presenting these cards. You may have seen them around town. We thought that it was good to know, give, like, lack of a better word, beach etiquette for some people that are coming from out of town and that are going to spend the day. So I feel very proud to be on this committee with people that are such doers and go-getters and that have the passion for the beaches. So thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Well done.
Next, we have discuss and vote increase in Beach Committee membership. This is something we talked a while ago and we just haven't got around to it, and thankfully we are. So we have discussed it. I think we, I thought we had voted it, actually, but I guess we didn't actually.
Charter change had to happen first.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, had to have a voted charter change.
Right. So now, are we ready to make this vote?
I think so.
Is there a motion to move this?
What is the actual vote?
The question is to add two members to make the Beach Committee go from five to seven members, which was.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So when will that be posted for applicants?
Yeah, we have a note here. There's a current vacancy for a full member, and that, the deadline for those applications is November 15th. And after the vote tonight to increase membership, Diane Davidson will put an ad in the enterprise and on the town website for the two new full-member positions, and that'll include a two-week deadline for applications. Certainly, thank you.
So if anyone's listening, this is obviously a really committed group of folks to get on board with, so hopefully people are watching.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Next, we have a discussion of Charter Review Committee recommendations. These are really designed to streamline it.
Yes, I asked it this be put on the agenda because I, it, what sparked my thinking was the article that Peter Clark put in the Falmouth Enterprise on October 15th. And I thought that the Charter Committee came up with some really good ideas in terms of how to streamline, use our meeting time, and use our agenda more efficiently and effectively.
Well, I certainly agree with it. Now we just have to figure out exactly what we want to delegate and how we do it.
I think when we discussed this before, there was a question of legally which things we could move to another committee.
I think, yeah, I think we identified that the liquor licensing, if we were to consider getting rid of that, we'd need a liquor licensing commission, and that would have to... we'd need a liquor licensing commission and that would have to be some legislation that we would have to request be filed.
Yes. Yep. That one might be.
But there's some smaller ones that we could consider. One is the special events. Now, I don't know how long it's been, two years, maybe three years, we've been having that special events committee? And so, we used to do the special events ourselves. And then, this committee was formed. And so, now I feel like, I personally feel like I'm maybe putting a little too much faith in what they're doing and I'm sort of rubber stamping it a little bit. I mean, I try to pay attention, but we've had a few conflicts where, uh, groups are using, maybe not exactly the same facility, but the same periphery where there's been some, uh, road races with ballgames and stuff that have been conflicting. And I'm wondering if it might be best for the special events committee to take the full responsibility for the event planning rather than just stopgap of giving us the last say when we're not paying as full attention as we probably used to. Yes?
Do they have, do they, they don't have public meetings at present, right? So, I mean, I guess that would be the change. They would have to probably have an agenda or some mechanism for input from the public to speak about, you know, to advertise the event that's coming forward for the permit and then for folks to be able to weigh in. I see the value that happens here. I agree with you. This group of five people doesn't have to, there's somebody else who can be more specialized and know the calendar and pay attention. I think the one thing that would have to happen is that component of the public knowing about it, having notice and being able to weigh in. That, that's the one thing that happens here.
Right.
That I don't think currently happens with the way that, you know, they, they do all the back, you know, background work and send it to us. And this is where the public would hear about it and be able to weigh in. So, I think it would require a change in how that, that operates to some extent so the public would still be able to weigh in.
Agreed.
I wouldn't be opposed to it. I just think we have to think about those logistics.
Sure.
And can we authorize the town manager to, to approve the, the beach weddings and those type of events? So that they don't come to us? I know they only take five minutes or so, but it's one more thing, sort of an administrative thing that I'm hoping that we don't have to do.
We could.
Would special events also do those? I mean, I guess.
We just have to keep in mind that we're supposed to be the, like, the guardians of town property. And so, if we give it up, we just gotta make sure that it's being done properly. Occasionally checking up on it somehow, I guess. I don't know. Not sure exactly how that would go, but I certainly agree with you. Because I think Dr. Clark's point in his, uh, email was that we don't spend enough time on policy planning and, you know, the forward thinking. And I agree with that critique. And the only other way to do it would be to meet every week or maybe start delegating some of this if, if possible.
And, and I'll just raise the issue about the meeting every week piece. It's not a problem for this, these people here. It's, it's a real challenge for staff to put together, and not even put together the packet, manage the schedules for all the people on a weekly basis who are making applications. And I think they, that Phyllis and Diane manage a lot. And they never really shy away from taking on pretty big, you know, agendas and put, getting that all together. And when they express saying that is just going to be so onerous in addition to everything else they're doing, I think I want to, you know, put some weight on that. And so, I think you're right. If we're still gonna be meeting, it's not always every other week. It just depends on how things fall, but then the only other way to do it is to delegate some things out.
And I think that, that we need to spend more time talking about policies and, um, our priorities and, and really delving into our priorities and not doing some of the, what seems to be administrative stuff that we could, we could certainly, um, either push back to the town manager or have him delegate. But there, there's gotta be a way that we can spend this time that is more efficient and more effective and, and, you know, I.
And another thing, another thing we could consider is possibly coming in here on a Saturday morning once a month or every other month to do specifically policy. And then, maybe just FCTV could be on and we'd speak amongst ourselves about, you know, these things that we're, we're missing now.
And where we are on our, in our priorities list, you know, how are we, where are we? How are we doing on that? So, the reason I, I just didn't want the work of the charter commission to just not be brought up and discussed. So, I think we can continue discussing it. I don't, you know, maybe tonight's not the night to spend a ton of time on it. But I don't want to let these ideas go. I think he's got some really valid points. And I think we need to listen and, and adjust the way we do business.
Yeah, I certainly agree. I just haven't thought of a, a smart way to implement them yet. Yes?
Maybe could we, um, sort of ask Julian, Peter, you know, to brainstorm some thoughts on, you know, to come back to us with some thoughts on how we could maybe streamline some of this? You know, what with the guidance of Frank, we could step out? You know, I mean, administrative orders tend to be things that are nice for the public to hear, like that we got $8,000 for vests, but probably not something that we have to vote. We're obviously not gonna turn down that money. So, I'm just thinking, are there ways that we can maybe get some input, um, from town management and town council about ways that we could perhaps start to streamline some things?
And I'd be happy to be part of that, Mr. Suso, with Dr. Clark and, and town council. And I think the other piece is, it's really where, where the chair can, can help move this committee is through that agenda. And I know you and I have talked about it and we've talked about how do we, how do we do it differently? Um, but I just, I just don't want to let that go. So, thank you for that.
In the, in the event scheduling, it seems to me that if there are conflicts that come up, there should be an appeal process where they can bring it back to us. If there's, it's complicated enough that we have to kind of sort through and prioritize things.
But that at first blush, it goes through the committee.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's a good point.
And the committee can decide. Uh, we have a problem here.
That's a great point.
So, this ought to go up to the, the select board to, to sort out.
Right.
Great point.
Well, we almost had that recently, but thankfully, one side was willing to concede and generously offered to reschedule their event.
Yeah.
I want to ask about this last question. How do you coordinate and follow policies that are not available? And he says here, we could not find personnel policies. Can we add that as something to discuss at a future meeting? If we, what our personnel policies are, where they're listed and discuss if we need to adjust them? I just have some ideas on that that I would like to discuss.
Sure. I think that's a great idea.
Agreed. Agreed. Are there a list of policies that we could post, Mr. Suso?
Um, we have various policies. Some are in bylaw form and some in form either adopted internally or by the select board. They're in various places and I can talk to Personnel Director about assembling those.
Any more on that for now or wait till we see about a little research?
Let's get some guidance and some research. Agreed.
Uh, next, we have discussion on short-term rental tax receipts and allocation of, to affordable housing. So, we've got the, um, discussion coming up at town meeting about whether or not we want to increase the, um, short-term rental tax, including hotels and motels, from five to six percent. And in the recommendation, it says that, you know, this other one percent could be allocated to affordable housing. But it, it's always occurred to me that really the, I think the short-term rental of houses here on the Cape and especially in Falmouth, where I'm aware of, I think it has a direct impact. I know I have one cottage that I rent on Airbnb and it's hard to resist because it makes more money than it would as a year-round rental. And I've rented it year-round before and because it's a small place on the water, but people that live here year-round don't care that much about being on the water. So, I can attest that I have taken a house out of year-round rental and put it into this market. And I voted for the tax thinking I was gonna pay it. Turns out that the renters pay it, so. Now, we're gonna have, uh, all these houses are paying this, what is five percent now? It may go to six. We're also considering adding that three percent surcharge, which would be for people who have more than one rental. Like, I'm searching online to go down and visit my daughter and, uh, I'm looking at all these Airbnbs and a lot of them are the same company again and again. Uh, in the Pennsylvania and Virginia area, I noticed Evolve is a company that comes up repeatedly. So, I don't know how many of those are around here, but I'd be interested to find out. I'm pretty interested in that, uh, additional tax for those type of professionally managed and owned, like investment properties. But I also like to know if the board is interested in considering whether or not more of the revenue from the hotel motel re, rental tax should apply to affordable housing rather than just the one percent.
Yeah, all of it.
Yeah. Not from the hotels and motels, but I mean, just from the short-term rentals. That was what I always thought, you know?
Well, I mean, they are a direct link to our lack of affordable housing.
Exactly.
And, so, I mean, I said that kind of jokingly, but no, I do think that we should use that money and put it towards affordable housing because it's, like, um, there's no proof that it's exactly causing our affordable housing crisis, but we know that is definitely one of the reasons we have this.
It's exacerbating it in a fast way.
Isn't that, we wouldn't vote that as a board, right? I mean, town meeting each year would.
I'm just trying to get a sense of the board. Uh, we're going to town meeting, but I think the board, I just wanted the board to discuss.
Yes, okay, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Not for us to vote per se, but just to have the discussion pre-town meeting, just to kind of put it out there so people are knowing what we're thinking.
And the question is every year, would that percentage have to be voted on?
Not the percentage, but whatever money that percentage generated would be voted on by town meeting into where it goes.
Isn't it a question of allocation that has to be voted?
Correct. Yeah, the appropriation each year would have to be voted. And just a reminder that, um, granted, it's, they are, they are new funds coming from this important purpose. Um, but this also has an impact on police, fire and public works. You know, all the additional rentals in the summer place a burden, uh, on, on, uh, public safety and public works as well. And those are costs that continue to escalate. Also, keep in mind that you provide free, uh, trash pickup for all of these properties. And that is, uh, an item that is going to go up exponentially the next time that we, uh, uh, have a contract which will begin next summer. So, just to keep in mind that if you take those sources of revenues out of play, then all we have is Prop 2 and 1/2 to fund all of these additional needs that you have in police, fire, public works, um, et cetera. And, uh, the pot is very small.
I think it's a really good point with the way the population swells in the summer. And I think it would be shortsighted of us to not consider that.
Yes.
But each year, we, when we, when we build our budget, I mean, we're gonna look at what our projected revenues are. And Jen's gonna give us sort of, she's gonna have an estimate of what that will be. And then, you know, we are going to budget accordingly, right? So, we're going to hopefully have, once this, like, unfurls a bit and we have a, we, hopefully, we'll have a sense of what this will generate. Then, and then we're looking at the expenses, like you're talking about staffing, for public safety, whatever other issues that come up, climate change mitigation, coastal resiliency. We're going to have that pot to have to divide into these different needs. So, there may be some years that, that we, we have a whole bunch and we're able to put more towards, um, affordable housing on a regular basis. I'm just gonna pick a number, but say it's four percent of that, you know, just sort of generally speaking. But other years when we know we have to build another fire station or respond to a really terrible storm with infrastructure that we know we're gonna need to repair. So, I mean, I think it's, every year, we have to look at the challenge of the budget and respond to, every year, every department expenses grow, right?
Right, that's why I asked the question, I'm sorry, Sam. That's why I asked the question about the, the allocation every year.
Every year.
Um, I think, I, I totally understand what Mr. Suso was saying about we have to make sure we have money available for fire and whatnot. But we already have an issue with not being able to hire firefighters and police officers.
Because they can't live here. And that's my point. I mean, it's, it's kind of, hey, we've got a housing problem that's affecting even, you know, we just talked about lifeguards and supervisors and why. Well, guess what? All the businesses are having the same struggle. So, how do we solve this problem? That's, I mean, that's the issue that's gotta be taken on. And, and I'm gonna throw this back to Julian and to our finance director and say, guys, we've got services that need to be provided to ma, to maintain the, the economic vitality that we have here in this town. How do we solve this financial crisis? And, and support the affordable housing so that people that provide these services can actually be here and participate? I, you know, this is not a simple thing, but I don't want us to say, oh, it's gonna increase the, the services that we're requiring. Okay, how do we solve it?
Well, we need some help from the state, I assure you of that.
Right.
The county, for instance, has $40 million in ARPA funds. And obviously, they don't provide the level of local government services that we do. So, that could go to affordable housing and we certainly want to, are encouraging that, among other things.
The other thing I think is important is this seems to be a, a source of revenue that's gonna be consistent. And if we were to make a policy that says that we're gonna use this Airbnb rental money from houses, it's a sustainable revenue or relatively sustainable because we now have to have this commitment to affordable housing every year. We're not gonna just be able to say, you know, we got lucky this year and we were able to take 1.7 in ARPA funds, which helped us to commit other town money from free cash to affordable housing. And so, it's a bit of a windfall for affordable housing, but really, it's what we need to do almost every year. Because if we're gonna be funding units, we're, you know, that project on Scranton Ave is great because it's what, 47,000 per unit? But if we're funding them up at around 80 or 90 or 100, which could happen with the six or eight unit development, depending on conditions, you know, the money's gonna go quickly. And if we gotta, we gotta come up with 60 or 70 units a year, that's, you know, that's a lot of money.
And we have a lot of catching up to do.
We do have a lot. That's why I want, I'm looking for, I'd like to support this, uh, using all this Airbnb. I know it's gonna have an impact on the budget, but at least it's an identifiable, sustainable source that we can depend on for affordable housing, so. If we're gonna be committed to it, we gotta think of ways that, you know, things that are gonna be around every year.
You know, we're having difficulty even filling department head positions and supervisory positions on town staff. You know, we make the offers, they accept and then they find out how expensive it is to get to, to live here and they withdraw. I mean, this is really beginning to bite us hard, you know? And I think it's time for us to take our heads out of the sand and say, how are we gonna address this? There's got to be a change in the financial balance here.
And one of.
As Karen's coming up, I would just say that part of the task of this board will be making an argument and selling it to town meeting. Because I'll be really honest, I don't think town meeting in general has been very receptive to affordable housing as a, as a whole. I mean, people talk about a commitment to affordable housing, but, um, and maybe they haven't been presented with a big enough, you know, selection. But I think there, there's been some resistance, right? We, we hear that within the community and I think within town meeting. So, if we're gonna sort of make that policy, this board has to really commit and take that on. How do you sell it to the community and how do you sell it to town meeting? Because there isn't an endless pile of money, so it will come at the expense of something else because that's just how money works. And so, we have to do a, a good job about crafting that, that argument and selling it if that's the way that the, you know, we go.
I know, but it's a brand-new, well, it's not brand-new, but it's relatively new tax and it generated 3.385 million here in Falmouth. That's a lot of money. And I know it's a lot of revenue. We did get by with our regular budgeting before this money was available and it does have an impact on housing, so I just feel like, personally, I feel like it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I'm not saying it, it's not. I'm just saying that I think we have to do a good job making the argument, making the case because there are lots of folks who are not gonna feel that that's very much in their interest.
Because we don't, we don't make that decision.
No.
Town meeting does.
Town meeting does.
And, and so, I agree that if, if this is what we're gonna stand behind, it would be incumbent upon us to be able to get up and really support it well at town meeting.
And make the argument.
Certainly willing to speak to it. Thank you, welcome.
Hi, welcome. Thank you. Karen Visonette, Affordable Housing Committee and also the Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Trust. And I would just second, um, what Ms. Englishbragger just said. And I was gonna ask you all to do that at town meeting. It's one thing to see it on paper, that you guys support those articles, but for you to speak at town meeting about this, I think is really powerful. Um, I also think that, um, we have a hard time with the definition of affordable housing or community housing and what that means and what that means to people. You know, I went to college in Chicago and there was a housing project called Cabrini-Green. And, um, it was one of the worst projects. It was actually where DeVal Patrick grew up. But it was, um, when I was there, a horrible, um, housing project. And I think that people in this community, when you say affordable housing, they think of, you know, projects. And they don't think of maybe, um, a place where a starting school teacher would, would live or a firefighter or a landscaper or someone who manages a restaurant or a waitress. And that's who the. or someone who manages a restaurant, or a waitress, and that's who the people that, you know, we really need and want in this community. So I would say, yes, we need you to do that. And also, I get concerned about the future. Um, the Select Board in, uh, December of 2018 approved the Housing Production Plan, 74 houses a year for five years, and it really was an unfunded mandate at that time, right? So I think it's great, the Articles 14, 15, and 16 that are, are coming up, um, and the $4 million, hopefully, we will get for the Affordable Housing Fund. But that's a one-year thing, as you said. So as far as I'm concerned, as an affordable housing advocate, this Select Board is the dream team for affordable housing. I'm concerned with future years, you know, that this allocation might not happen. And so I think we have to think of that, um, and so if we can put some things in place that are going to be sustainable, um, and also if you have a reoccurring, um, source of funding, you also can maybe bond or something like that, if there is, if there is a sustainable source of, of funding, like we did for, um, open space quite a few years ago. So, um, I would just say that I want to thank you all for being so supportive of that, and, but I think it really would mean a lot if some of you spoke at town meeting, um, not just to have it in paper that you, um, support that. Um, and I also want to say, I was watching from home earlier about the 1.3, I'm sorry, the $1 million, and, and thank you, Sam, for putting a minimum of, but I believe it was the housing coordinator that put the 1.3 million dollars. In fact, she told me that. I don't believe that. She did tell me that, that she recommended 1.3, and that's where that came from. Um, she, she recommended the 1.3 million, um, for the CPC. So I know she's away on vacation, but, um, not speaking for her, but she told me that, um, before she left. So I thank you all, um, and, um, I'm looking forward to town meeting, and I just think it's the beginning, because I think the town is finally getting it. So it, anything you could say for affordable housing, and who it represents, and who it's going to help, um, because it helps all of us, I mean, really. And as we get older and older, I don't want to live in a community, I've said this before, that everyone's 60 and older. You know, we need young people, and our school, our schools are dwindling, and I think that's very sad. And without young people in this community, it's such a different community, so, thank you.
Boring, right?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And one last thing about the, uh, idea of the funding for affordable housing. The one other thing we could consider would be putting a solid commitment in our operating budget for affordable housing, rather than voting it every year at town meeting, not, I won't say haphazardly, but, you know, inconsistently.
An actual line item?
Right. And if this was a source of revenue, we could say, identify that and say that would be an operating budget item, if we want to consider it. Anybody, yes?
Mark Fineran, I, I mean, I've, uh, brought this up before, and, uh, I don't really mind being the one that has to wipe the lipstick off the pig, so to speak. But, I mean, a lot of this affordable housing problem we have, we, we dug the hole ourself because of our desire to, to buy up all the open land that's cheap. I mean, the number one ingredient you need for affordable housing is affordable land. And I mean, in the last five or eight years, I mean, we bought up the, the Dario parcel and the other two that were beside it, somewhere in total in the neighborhood of, what, 80 acres or something like that? I mean, in, in a normal world, I mean, those would have been land for housing to be built on, and, uh, maybe next time that something like that comes up, instead of buying it for open space, we should be buying the land and then making some deal with the developer or something to, to convert it into affordable housing, because, I mean, I think people come first. I mean, and the reality is, look at an aerial photo of Falmouth. I mean, we're over 50% open space. I mean, you can go on the state's website and find it. I mean, I said it was 46% about 10 years ago, and somebody told me that I was wrong, and I know that I had read it, and when I went back and found the same website, it was up to like 56%. So I mean, we, we really are kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, and maybe you should just keep that in the back of your head. Next time we want to buy some more open space, I mean, we, you know, it's all great and everything. I mean, I grew up in the sticks in Vermont, I love it. But I mean, we're running out of land, and to keep buying it up for open space, I mean, we're just depriving the people that want to live here.
Unless we can hopefully develop our downtown areas into more dense housing.
20, 30, I mean, it's-
We're gonna have to do both, aren't we?
Ah, yeah, we're gonna, I mean, gonna do, I mean, there's just not any other choice.
In the back of my mind, I'm still thinking about that parcel of land that we have the fir- right of first refusal. Um, over, is it near 151, and I know, I know people say like, oh, that's at the edge of town, you know, and that's so far from everything, but there's still businesses in western North Falmouth that use people, and people might want to live out there. They might not want to live anywhere near downtown.
Almost everything you need in North Falmouth, from a bike ride away.
Yeah.
Does the bus go there anyway?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I'm very much for opus, um, affordable housing. I, I, I worked with a few committees in town. And I think this board and our zoning board have the feeling that we can't use for affordable housing anything that isn't near towns and the towns, the schools, and so forth. And there isn't a, a plumber who's starting that doesn't have a pickup truck. They, it's not, we can have affordable housing outside in open space that, that's not being used now. We don't have to worry about transportation. People have cars, they're going to, they have to if they're gonna work. And I, I keep hearing this, well, we can't do it because, and I think it's crazy. I mean, you're, you hire carpenters. What, do all, all carpenters have to live within town because they can't get to the job?
No, they have vehicles, because we build unaffordable housing.
Yeah, I, I mean, you, I think we have to really work on using the land we have and the land we can get, and let the people who want to live there solve those problems. Thank you.
One more thought. When I was at the Falmouth Housing Trust fundraiser the night, which was really fun, great time, great fundraiser, one of the homes that they discussed was a home that was, uh, dilapidated, you know, and they restored that home. And so I think one thing that we don't talk often about is using the space that we already have. And I know that there's a lot of legalities if, if a building is, you know, in a trust, or if it's not, if someone's still paying the taxes on it even though it's not livable. But I think we really should look at the homes and the properties that we already have that are developed, or at least in spaces that could be, like refurbished, for lack of a better term. I think in my, in my neighborhood specifically, across from, from us, at Setback, there's a home that burned down four years ago, and it, it's literally just sitting there, like, the roof is caving in, it's, it's got a nice, um, chimney that's still standing, but, you know, and, and nobody really knows what's going on. We know that the owner has passed. Maybe that someone in the family is paying taxes on it, maybe not, but I just think, thinking outside of the box and using those spaces, perhaps something the town can do, and I'm just throwing out ideas here, is if someone hasn't paid the taxes on their home for a while, and the town collects that home because the house is paid for, then we give first dibs to an organization or a nonprofit, or for-profit company that will turn that into affordable housing. And then if nobody wants it, then we put it on the market or something. So I just think, thinking outside the box in some of those ways, um, would keep us from having to reinvent the wheel and rebuild more things, and also keep us from having to use the open space that, that we like.
Well, like I said, I think we're gonna have to use all of these tactics. And Mr. Suso, could you comment? Uh, do you have any kind of idea how often, uh, a house might be taken by the town? That, and what the disposition would become, or, just to follow up on that idea?
In this market, it's relatively rare.
Zero.
Uh, almost, yeah, pretty close to zero, just because there's, uh, real estate's too valuable, and, uh, there are usually relatives involved, and sometimes things are involved in litigation and delayed, but generally, uh, an interested party steps forward, and what we end up with are marginal pieces of land that aren't large enough to, uh, develop, in, in a number of cases, on the, on the, on the tax delinquency issue.
And the other thing is, you're seeing a lot of people come in, buy an old place, and then just simply rebuild it.
Right.
Redevelop it, expand it, and what have you. We get these notices from the ZBA all the time of, of different projects that are being proposed. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I can tell you that some of the housing authorities in Massachusetts have used that model. There, I don't think we're, we're gonna produce enough to make that a viable plan, but that's my take on looking what's going on.
At this point, I feel like every, everyone counts.
Yeah, well, if we can find a way to, to do one or two like that, that'd be fine.
Absolutely.
Are you gonna say something, Nancy?
Uh, I was thinking two things. One is, I know this past summer, people from out of town and cities were buying up houses and found the site unseen. You know, I had a couple of friends, people didn't even show up. They just did it over email, or fax, or whatever, bought the houses, moved on. So I think that is an issue. But I also think that, um, every idea, like, we should turn over every stone. Every idea that we can come up with to help solve this crisis is really important.
Yes.
I, I was just gonna say, it's to Dan's point and to what Mark was saying. Not every, um, housing project is gonna be the same, right? So we are going to develop different types of things. So when we can develop something like Scranton Ave, we're gonna develop Scranton Ave. When we can develop some of the standalone houses like they have out in Hatchville, on Turner Road, that's what we're gonna build. We have, I mean, people, it's true what Dan is saying. You're gonna build a certain type of development, and it's gonna draw certain people. It may not meet the need of every person. So there are gonna be developments you, you build that someone who does not have a vehicle is not going to move into, but there are many people with vehicles who still need affordable housing. So we have to build lots of different types of housing, rental, you know, we've taught, we, we, we know that from our, from our study. And so, you know, we can use those spaces that are further out, like you're talking about the right of first refusal out towards North Falmouth-Hatchville area. That might be a certain type of development, you know, versus what we do if we can get some kind of partnership and do something closer to town. So all of those things are gonna be, they're all needed. I mean, they're all going to fit different needs for folks who still fall within the range for affordable housing.
Yeah, and that actually, that property might turn out to be something that could be worthy.
But, but painting a picture of what affordable housing actually is and looks like needs to be our first step. I mean, in terms of town meeting, we, we have to paint a picture of what affordable housing really looks like.
Let's go down to Springbys Road and take a picture.
I agree, but, but, but really getting town meeting to understand what it looks like is so important. Because I agree that, you know, people do have a certain image in their heads, you know, which is where you get the "not in my backyard" attitude.
Or banana.
I'm sorry?
There's a banana. Build absolutely nothing anywhere near anybody.
There you go. I love it.
Yeah.
So, so, just as a very foundational point of, of really showing people what it looks like, I think is, is a critical step.
Yes.
I know the agenda's already light, Maury Harlowhawks. Um, regarding the 151 property and what Dan said, and Mark, there aren't large tracts anymore, and you really should be looking at the 151 property. Development for affordable housing, one of the biggest things is site work. And that's why all the farm land out in East Falmouth all get used up for, for affordable housing. It's easy to plow under a strawberry field and put houses up. When you get into moraine and you get into filling land, it gets very expensive. So that's why usually the nice flat level land. The 151 is a hub, it's near, I mean, you've got, um, all your busing goes through there to go to Mashpee, you have the bike path, they've been talking about that, and this has been going on for a long time. This is, we've been going through this right of first refusal several times on this property, and it just keeps getting more and more expensive. But it is one of the last large tracts. And the Esca Place, you know, that was one of the first full-blown affordable, every house was an affordable house in that development. And you go by there, and, look, you know, they're all our buddies. I mean, they're, they're landscapers, they're teachers, um, and like you say, paint a picture. People should go by there, and, I mean, it's a great little community, and it's in Hatchville, and it's in, back then, we used to call it the Boondocks. I mean, and now, I mean, the one that was on Cloverfield Way, the 10,000 square foot lot, is a beautiful home for a kid that, and his wife, that work in town. So those are, you know, we have to get really creative, but Mark's right, we're selling off all this land for open space, and if, if you haven't got cheap land, you're never gonna have a cheap house.
Sorry, I don't mean to belabor this. One quick question for Jordan and Karen. Are you guys working on a presentation to give at, just nod your head, yes, okay. I, I will work on with you on that.
All right. Is that it for this one?
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
So the next thing is a discussion on West Falmouth Station, uh, station staffing. And the reason I asked to have this on, I know we just talked at length about the station last week, or the last meeting, but I just wanted to clarify the position of the board with regard to, uh, the status of West Falmouth, and what our policy would be regarding it. I feel like my, my position has always been that I wanted to see West Falmouth staffed until such time as we decide to build a Northwest, or, uh, I don't want to give too many alternatives of what could happen, but until we've come up with a plan to replace the West Falmouth Station with something that serves the Northwest area, I feel like I'd like to see the West Falmouth Station staffed and committed to be staffed. And I just want to get a sense of the board, is that our actual position?
Yeah, I, I think our position was continue to staff the West Falmouth Fire Station.
And we, we do have a, a Select Board strategic plan priority with some clarification.
Right.
So that language has clarified, uh, to read, "Continue to pursue a staffing plan which includes the assignment of two firefighters at start of shift to West Falmouth Fire Station until the construction of a new replacement fire station is completed."
And would that mean to say that that means the new Northwest station? Is that specifically-
Whatever station this board determines is a replacement station. That'll be your call.
Well, I just didn't want to leave any, uh, confusion that people might think that we're referring to the Sandwich Road Station.
Yeah, I don't read it.
Well, Sandwich Road wouldn't replace West Falmouth.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right.
But I, has ever suggested that, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I read it as saying until the construction of a new replacement fire station is completed, of West Falmouth, because it knows West Falmouth.
Right.
Because it says-
That's how I read it.
Yeah.
Would it make more sense to, to just say, "Continue to pursue a staffing plan which includes the assignment of two firefighters at start of shift to the West Falmouth Fire Station," period? Do we have to in- include until a new station is, do we have to put a contingency on it?
We don't have to, actually. We could just say that that's our policy, and then when we come up with a new plan, we can come up with a new policy. You feel like that's a simpler statement?
I think that's what we intended.
Okay.
I think it takes the ambiguity out of it, and takes the question of, do we need a new station, or an upgraded station, or a Northwest station? I think it just takes all of that.
Do we have to amend the Select Board's, um, strategic plan if we change that, that wording?
Well, idea, ideally, you just voted that at the end of, um, August. But, um, just something for the board to keep in mind, that West Falmouth Station is beyond its useful life. And, uh, that's been clearly delineated, so you need to be doing something.
I know, but I think what, what Julian is pointing out is that we have to be clear that we're working on a plan to address the issue of north and west. However, that, whatever this board ultimately decides, I think that that's why that particular verbiage was in there. I, I mean, I don't think we have to, it doesn't really matter what, if we can say it the simple way that Anji's saying. I think the point is, we, we as a board, and I, I get it, we've talked about it a lot, but we have to be clear that we're, we, we have to be making plans towards not just the status quo of what we have right now. We have to be making plans towards what iteration, whether it's two, one combined, what, we have to be making plans towards that. I think that's just-
So this acknowledges that that station needs to be either rebuilt or replaced. Something has to happen, because it's just not functional long-term as it is.
The option that is not- The option that is not on the board is to leave it the way it is.
Forever.
Correct?
Indefinitely, correct.
Right. I don't recall if, I apologize, I didn't look at our strategic plan again, so I don't recall if there's any other discussion on the fire stations in, in context of this.
Very similar to this. This is just kind of a reiteration, because I don't think everybody reads our strategic plan or understands that it has the leverage.
Okay. So good, I can't believe they don't dive right into it as soon as it's published. I think the clarification is good.
I, I do, too.
I think it, I think it just points out that movement needs to happen to do something with the issue of that station. We don't know what that something is yet, because...
Right, maybe we don't know, but, but we, we need to let the West Falmouth people know two things. One is that it will be staffed, and the second is that we're going to address the condition of the West Falmouth Fire Station.
That's how I read it, that's how I read it, anyway.
Yeah, that's how I read it as well. So, I, I think that's important to say.
Is this language sufficient for the board, then, to send that message?
I feel comfortable with it.
I do, too.
I'm quite comfortable with it, too, just as it is.
Just a reiteration of what we had said, but it just makes it clear to the public that we do have this policy in place. We have a commitment, yes, please.
I don't think we've gotten a whole week off like last time. Really not totally related tonight, but I knew it was from two weeks ago, and it's, Angelina, you were on the, and Ms. Taylor asked a question, don't, this is just great reading, but it gives you some, we've worked really hard, and this is just something to give you some insight on when you were talking about costs and all sorts of things.
Thank you.
Just, just basic, and someday we'll, someday we'll have another, one of those great forums where we can really discuss this, because when you see how important all the stations are, it gives you a good idea. And I, we appreciate all your time, all the effort you guys have done with this, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the board want to vote to accept this clarification?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Suso.
So, is this, how's this gonna get ratified? Is it gonna, are we gonna change it?
It's really...
I think it's in concert with what you've already voted, just clarifying it.
I think he's asking where it will be. I think, Sam, are you asking where it will live?
Yeah, where's it gonna live, and, and, you know, how will people know that we...
Put this on the website under Board of Selectmen.
Okay, that sounds good.
Perfect. Mr. Chair, do you want me to do the honors, do you want me to read through the list?
Certainly.
Okay. All alcohol restaurant, East End Tap, 734 T-Ticket Highway, Falmouth Country Club, 630 Carrot Shop Road, Falmouth Jade, 143 to 145 East Falmouth Highway, Flying Bridge, 220 Scranton Avenue, Josh's at Davisville, 133 East Falmouth Highway, Moto Pizza, 500 Walk White Highway, Paul Harney Golf Club, 74 Club Valley Drive, Paul's Pizza, 37 Lane Avenue. That's my motion.
Second.
Second.
In case anyone didn't know, this is for annual license renewals.
Oh, sorry, yes. Diving right into it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All alcohol package store, Falmouth Food Mart and Liquor, 414 East Falmouth Highway.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All alcohol club, Cape Cod Curling Club Incorporated, 37 Highfield Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt restaurant, Homeport Sushi, 316 Gifford Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt package store, and then I'll also do wine, malt, and cordial in holder. So, Intergas Service Center Incorporated, 607 Main Street, and Palmer House Inn, 81 Palmer Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tom and Victroler, East End Tap, 734 T-Ticket Highway, Falmouth Country Club, 630 Carrot Shop Road, Falmouth Jade, 143 to 145 East Falmouth Highway, Flying Bridge, 220 Scranton Avenue, Homeport Sushi, 316 Gifford Street, Josh's at Davisville, 133 East Falmouth Highway, Lobos House of Pizza, 338 East Falmouth Highway, Moto Pizza, 500 Walk White Highway, Paul Harney Golf, 74 Club Valley Drive, Paul's Pizza, 37 Lane Avenue, Pie in the Sky, 10 Water Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In holder Palmer House Inn, 81 Palmer Ave.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertainment, East End Tap, 734 T-Ticket Highway, Flying Bridge, 220 Scranton Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And fortune teller, The Holistic Swan, 628 West Falmouth Highway.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And minutes of meetings, did notice on the one that was, that there was a little something that needs to be...
Okay, well, let's, let's start, oh, do you want to do that one first, because it's earlier?
Well, no, you can go ahead, because I'm gonna, look, I didn't write, I didn't print that.
Okay, on the, minutes of October 4th, on page two, a couple of little minor edits, let's see, in the middle paragraph, the typo where Mr. says, Mr. Johnson Stog, there's a sentence in the middle that said, where's it? It is, it is not clear that there is any, anyone with legal standing that has a basis to, I think it is contest, decision, it says context.
Yeah, that would be contest, yep.
So, that just needs a typo. And then, a fourth paragraph from the bottom, where it cites, the reason for the paving was for a project abutting the, and I think that should be FHD for Falmouth Housing Trust, not Falmouth Housing Authority property, so it's important that we, so that's the one. And then on page 10, there, under number, says review and vote to approve minutes, says Mr. Patterson, motion approval as edited, I think we need to add in there, and release for public access, because it was my motion, just so we have a record of it. And then dropping down to number nine, it references Tom Kerr as the director of CCRT, that should be C.A.H.I.R., and there are two places for it, the last line, so Tom Kerr should be Tom Care, C.A.H.I.R. And with those edits, I would move approval and release for public access.
I have a couple more.
Oh, sure, go.
On page four, under public hearings, public comment, Nancy McDonald, 48, went to ask about, the word about is missing, so it just says, ask the process. And then on business, number one, on the, was this the fourth line, boost eligibility if immune compromise, and had, Moderna is just spelled wrong. Hasn't...
What was your first one? Angelina, I apologize.
No problem.
On, on the same page?
Yes, on page four, up at the very top, under public hearings, one, public comment, Nancy McDonald, 48, went to ask about the process, the word about is missing.
Oh, got it, thank you.
And I also wanted to comment that it seems like we're getting these a lot sooner than we were before, and so I appreciate whoever's putting in the work to make that happen sooner.
Jennifer.
Um, I have, sorry, just one. Is it on page seven, where it says, Mike Mulder, was that supposed to be Mike Mueller? Or is that, I don't know, is that...
Is that to do with...
That's Mike Mueller.
Yeah.
Who works for the fire department and is the...
He's a union rep.
President of the union or something, yeah, it's Mueller. She's, she says she spelled it phonetically, so that's wrong.
Oh, and there's one more on page nine. Oh, oh, two-thirds of the way down, it says Article 26 through 31, says George Clark said the explanations were written, and that should be Peter Clark, I believe.
That's his alias.
It's Peter George. You didn't know that, Sam?
Any others?
No.
All right, well, with those edits, I would approve the minutes of October 4th as edited and, and release for public access.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll put my edits in, everybody else can, I have just one, on page seven, this is the, these are the minutes of August 9th, so going back a bit. The paragraph just above F, where it says, the Select Board discussed that there is one vacancy, would like to give applicants another opportunity to respond.
Which page is that, Sam?
Page seven.
Seven, thank you.
Make sure the Select Board hears from them, the Falmouth Housing, it should be Housing Authority Board, not, currently meets via Zoom, that's how I would reword it, to make sense. So, it's the Falmouth Housing Authority Board, currently meets via Zoom. That's the only one I came up with. Anybody else have any other edits?
No.
All right, well, with that...
I didn't print it, so I'll defer to your edits.
With that, I would move approval and release for public access as edited.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And anybody have any reports they want to give?
Nope.
Survive the More Easter, birthday wins and all, I'm fine. Oh, we already mentioned in announcements, I don't want to...
Okay, then.
Anji, I'm gonna pass that down to you.
Just two minor items.
That goes back to Anji, I borrowed it. Thank you.
Boards, the next regular meeting is Monday, November 22nd, and as a reminder, did come up earlier in the meeting, we are returning in person, as the Chair Brown indicated, to Veterans Day Ceremony, this Thursday, November 11th, on the library lawn, 11:00 a.m. So, we'll look forward to that, and we also have the walking procession from the Town Common, approximately 15 to 20 minutes in advance, if the board wants to assemble there and be part of that as well, it's always welcome. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we do have our special Select Board meeting on the 15th, right, starting at 6:00?
Yes.
Yes.
At Lawrence.
Oh, right, yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Are we meeting...
Just before town meeting, thank you for that oversight.
Are we meeting in the room we usually meet in?
Yes.
All right, we have to be there at 6:00 o'clock.
So, we'll send out a note about that.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. Well...